Good afternoon, welcome to Citizens Tower. It's 1:06 PM. Today's the 12th of October 2021. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order in work session this afternoon. Thanks for joining us, whether you're in the chambers or joining us via Lubbock, City of Lubbock TV or the world wide web. We're glad you're with us. We've got a full day of activity, starting with several items in work session. However, before we begin, our first item is citizen comments. We have one citizen who has signed up to speak this afternoon. And we will ask Joe Conister to come forward right now.
I'm working fast, please.
Okay, alright, thank you ma'am. Appreciate you being here again and you would have a chance to speak again at another time. Okay. We will then move, that's our only citizen that signed up for citizen comments. And we'll now then move to item 2-1. And we're going to get our first look at redistricting. And this will be the first of a number of meetings that we will spend, where we will spend time on, and in fact, one meeting where we'll dedicate to redistricting. So to begin this discussion, I'll call on the city secretary to make a couple opening comments. Ms. Garza.
Yes, thank you mayor. As you said, this is the first step in the city's redistricting process. And we do have our consultant here, David Mendez with Bigger Staff. They have taken the census numbers that have been put out there. They've looked at our district maps. And they're here, he is here to give you an initial assessment of what that looks like. And then also to tell you a little bit about the laws that we have to follow and about the redistricting process. So I will turn it over to David.
Thank you Ms. Garza. Good afternoon, Mr. Mendez. We're glad you're here.
Good afternoon.
Welcome back.
Glad to be back with you all, council members. So what I'm gonna do this afternoon is review the, in a summary format, the initial assessment that I provided to you. I've provided you with a fairly hefty packet of demographic and other information about that the 2020 census reveals to you all and to show the population of the city and the various districts. But what I'm gonna do to this afternoon is kind of do a quick review of that, a summary review of the major issues. Before I get to the numbers, I wanted to review for the community, because this is not something we do every day. You know, we look at this once a decade. And I want to explain a little bit about the requirement. Why are we as a city obligated to look at this question? And then as we realign the council districts to get the population balance that is to be achieved, why, what parameters, legal parameters do we work under? Because this is, at its heart, it's a math problem. We're gonna divide the population of the city among the council districts. But it's a legal problem, you know, it's a legal issue. And so we're gonna talk about one person, one vote under the 14th Amendment and why we are like the legislature. And that's what we're going through this, like what we would go through for Congress or the legislature. And then I'm gonna review the Voting Rights Act, which is the most powerful voting protections that have been provided for our citizenry in this last century. And so how that fits into your review. There are other constitutional requirements that have been balanced with the Voting Rights Act, and we'll talk about those. There are also some legal changes that have occurred during the decade that we'll review that make this process a little different than what you might have been through or the citizens might have been through in 2011, when you last looked at this. And then there are some policies that you're gonna be putting into action hopefully this evening at the city council meeting that allow the citizens to participate and that tie us to these legal principles. And so I'm gonna review those for you now, so that when you get to the city council meeting, that puts those issues in context. And so then, why are we looking at the census? Well, you as the city council, to the extent that you're elected from a single member district, are like a congressman or like a state senator or representative in the fact that you represent a segment of the whole, of all of Lubbock. And to the extent that each of your districts has roughly the same amount of population, then that gives each citizen an equal vote here. They elect a representative from their district to be their voice here at the dais. And if one district is substantially out of balance from the other districts, it creates problems of under and over representation. And so that's what we're doing. So we compare the least populous and most populous districts. We're not like Congress, where mathematically, every congressional district in Texas has to have 1/38 of the population of the state. There's roughly 900,000 people in each congressional district. But when they do the math of it, it's gotta be down to the person divided by the various congressional districts. For us, the courts have allowed us to do, to have some leeway. So we have a 10% deviation, we have to stay within a 10% deviation. So I have a city council here example to kind of simplify the math or what we're looking at. In this little, in this city with 40,000 people, each district's ideal population size would be 10,000. And population in District A happens to be under the census 11,000, so it's 10,000 overpopulated. And in District D, it's 2,000 underpopulated, so it's 20% underpopulated. The way you calculate deviation, the maximum deviation that this city has in our example is 30%. And so that, the maximum we're allowed to have is 10%. So that city in that example would have to rebalance. So we look at the PL 94-171 data. This is what I, when I came and talked to you all a month or two ago, we were waiting for these datas to be released to us. And we now have them. And they provide data at the block level, census block level here in Lubbock, of every man, woman, and child that lives here as counted. And those counts are not always perfect, but they're the official count that's used for this purpose. We may challenge it for other purposes down the road, but for voting purposes, this is the data the courts will accept. So we're gonna take that total population data and use it to divide among the six districts. We also have data, and I provided you some information on the demographics of your district, about the voting age population of the districts. And that's important because that population is used to measure voting rights. What we are now segueing into is that Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which applies to us, says that for those members of protected minority classes within the city, that we must avoid as a city packing or cracking those populations, those communities of interest, so that as to not discriminate against them. What does that mean? Well, when we're drawing the districts, we have to be cognizant of how much, or whether there's a sufficiently large and geographically compact population of minority folks in that district that elect candidates of their choice. And so if we have an underpopulated district, we need to add population to it, we want to make sure that as we add population, we do not crack it, or that we don't dilute its voting interests by adding people that are gonna overwhelm that protected minority group. Likewise, if you have enough minority population to fit into multiple districts, so that they can elect candidates on a proportional basis to council, you're gonna try not to put them all in one district so as to minimize the number of people they can influence or elect on the council. So that's packing. And so we, the policies that we're proposing that you adopt prevent us from engaging in that activity. So the 14th Amendment has a whole other side to it as well, because the Anglo population has the right not to be discriminated against either. And so we are limited in our examination of racial issues to that one question we were talking about in the prior slide. Have we protected those minority groups in the district? And then we stop looking at race. From that point forward, we are really worried about what potholes are in your district, or what parks are in your district, and what territory, and how do I take care of my constituents? What are the city council, what's the work of the council? So we're gonna really narrowly tailor any look at race to that compelling state interest of the Voting Rights Act, and then we're done with that part of it. Here's an example, it's easier to see it in a picture than to understand, than to talk about it. The picture on the upper left is about, from about 20 years ago, when the legislature was trying to draw a congressional district that elected, the red district was supposed to elect a black representative in Harris County. The green district that surrounds it, or that was intermingled with it, was supposed to elect a Hispanic representative. And the court found that that was racial gerrymandering, that that's illegal to do in our state. And so what they did, the court redrew it. It hired, it had a master in the court, and they drew it themselves. And they drew the same two districts in the bottom right version that they approved at the court. They did exactly the same thing. The red one is a majority black district, the green one was a majority Hispanic district at the time. And they elected, the citizenry there could elect candidates of their choice, but it was much more compact and restrained in its form. And that's the kind of stuff we're trying to avoid. Our council districts, we're fortunate here in the city that we have very compact districts. And our, they have traditionally had a strong, there are some districts that have a strong minority representation in them, others that don't. Our community is changing. And when we look at the census, we're becoming a lot more integrated. And one of the challenges that we're gonna have when we get to the numbers, not to give anything away, is that as we repopulate and redistribute the population districts to get it balanced, it's gonna be hard to maintain the levels of minority population in each district. And I'm gonna be looking to you guys through a series of legal questions that your legal counsel and I will be asking you, your city attorney and my firm, my law firm, will look at those issues with each of y'alls through some material I'm gonna gather from you before I come back with a suggestion for a starting plan. Because I'm concerned that, and I know you're concerned about protecting districts in your area. But again, the criteria or redistricting standards that this Chauvin Reno line of cases and that the Voting Rights Act imposed, put us down a path where we need to have some very specific policies so that we can redistrict correctly. And I'll get to that policy here in a second. And I've drafted, we've drafted one, which the city secretary has put on the agenda for this evening's consideration. And it has what are called traditional districting criteria. I'm gonna get to them in a minute. But before I get there, I wanted to go over a couple of voting changes, legal changes that occurred during the decade. Last decade, when the city of Lubbock redistricted and every other town, every other city that had these kind of districts in Texas, every school, every county, had to go to Washington, had to send them to Washington to get them pre-cleared by the Department of Justice before we could apply them in an election. That, in 2013, in the case of Shelby County versus Holder, the Supreme Court said that that requirement is no longer necessary. We do not, as a political subdivision in this state, need to go to Washington and get permission to use our districts. But we are still bound by all of the anti, the non-discrimination policies in the Voting Rights Act, Section 2 and otherwise. And so we're gonna now, the responsibility fully lies on us as a council, and in me as a lawyer, to make sure that we come up with a plan that meets all those standards. And that's what we're gonna be doing, and we're gonna use all of the Section 5 stuff as diagnostic to that effect. Now, the criteria that I'm gonna, that I've suggested, it's in the resolution for you tonight, says that we're gonna try to use readily identifiable boundaries to redistrict. We're gonna try to maintain neighborhoods and communities of interest together, not split them. We're gonna try to use whole voting precincts to the extent possible to redraw it, so that it's simpler for voters. We're gonna try to base our plan on the existing districts and modify them as little as necessary so that we don't draw you guys out of your district from your, because you have relationships with your constituents, with your neighborhood there. And we want, we're trying to preserve those for everybody. We're also drawing districts that are compact and contiguous, as we've discussed, try to avoid any gerrymandering. We're gonna also use the census population to do these calculations, and we're gonna narrowly tailor any voting rights remediation to, just to get us in balance. So the benchmark that I'm applying today is your existing council districts, and to that, we're applying the 2020 data. We're really kind of going through, this is the first step in a process. We're gonna review this, the data today. Tonight, you're gonna adopt guidelines and criteria. The other resolution you have is a resolution that allows the citizenry to participate in public input sessions. We're gonna have a couple of work sessions where we're gonna draw the districts. You and I are gonna draw the districts together at the dais here, or in a work session. And the information will be live on the screen. But we're gonna give the citizenry a public input section so that they can provide input to you, and they may also provide other written suggestions. And so that's what the second resolution you have is available to you for tonight. I'm gonna circulate my questions, legal questions, through your lawyer, through the city attorney to you. And then I'm gonna develop a starting point for discussion of how we approach solving the imbalance. And then based on our work here at the, as a group, and any comments we get, we'll adopt a plan. The basic approach for this is today, we're doing this in initial presentation. About a month from now, we will have our first drawing session. First drawing session. So I'm gonna send that questionnaire to you later this week. You can then have a couple of weeks to give me some feedback. I'll have some time to kind of develop a plan, and then I'll bring it for that work session on November the 16th. We'll have a public input at the beginning of that session, we'll publicize that information. We'll put the initial assessment information up on Ms. Garza's website, so that the public can see what the numbers are. And then we'll have a second work session after the first one on the 30th of November. And then with a view to adoption in December at a couple of your regular meetings. And so with that in mind, what I'd like to do now is get to the numbers. So this is your drawing of your existing districts. This is the critical chart here. So the population of the city grew to 257,485, with an ideal district size of 42,914 in each of your districts. Now, you can see as we go through this, that Districts 1, 2, and 3 lost population. They didn't grow as fast as other parts of the city during the decade. So they're slightly underpopulated by about 10%, 14%, and 12% respectively. Likewise, number 6, District number 6, has a slight population loss. And most of the population gain, as we've seen over the decades, has come from the southwest of Lubbock. That's been, for a couple of decades now, I think, a common element. And Districts 4 and 5 is where we see the growth. The difference between our most populous and least populous district is 46.7%, 4.1%, which is significant, pretty significant. And it's not an easy puzzle to solve. And I'll say this, just from a voting rights standpoint, there is substantial minority population, and these are voting age, these are 18 years of age or older. I wanted you to see this chart, and I wanted to focus the community on it, because this chart shows the people that are 18 years of age or older in each of your districts and their demographics. And so to the extent that Districts 1 and 2 have a significant Hispanic population, let's just talk about them first, they comprise about half of the voting age population in those two districts. To the extent that we have a significant African-American population, it's located in Districts 2 and 3, and it's at around 22% in District 2 and 17% in District 3. And the other districts don't have quite as high numbers in that regard. And so here's the challenge. When, if this, and I've included a thematic chart in there, it'll be in the data that will be on the website. But it shows, this is a dense, how Hispanic, or what is the percentage of Hispanics that live in each census block for the whole city? And it shows that they're fairly dispersed throughout the county. And the same for African-Americans. While there's a strong African-American concentration in the east side of town, in, I think it's District 1, no, 2, there are, there is, the rest of the African-American population is very dispersed, let's just say. So here's the difficulty. As you look at your district map, and I provided, behind the big map for the overall map, I provided inset's or district-specific maps for you all, so you could kind of see in more detail. And if you need more detail, just call me or have Ms. Garza get with me, and I'll keep providing more and more levels of detail. Because you're gonna need to look, if you're a district that has less, if you need to add 3,000 or 4,000 people to your district to get it up to the ideal size, you need to kind of help me, help you figure out how we're gonna do that. If you have a district that has excess population that you need to give off, you're gonna be giving it off of the contiguous areas that are to the other districts. But I need your help, because there may be constituent relationships that the rest of you guys have with your voters that you wanna, you need to preserve, and you can't give up some territories. And so that's the give and take of this process. So that's part of what we're gonna be going through in the next step. And I hope this was helpful to explain the problem. Like I said, my team will distribute through the city attorney a set of legal questions I have to try to stay within the Voting Rights Act. I'll be here tonight in case there's questions about the policies. Are there any questions of me, mayor, or council members as we go through?
I believe we have a question or two. Before we start though, just counsel, I just would remind you that what Mr. Mendez is pointing to is the resolutions we're considering, Items 8-1 and 8-2, which is the guidelines and the criteria. Okay, let's start with Ms. Joy.
A couple of questions, and one is more of a request. On your chart where you show what the census showed for our current district in terms of, like District 6 was 40,000 people, it would have been helpful to seeing the number at the last redistricting, what that number was?
Sure, I can do that.
Because that's gonna figure into this. And then secondly, as I understand it, the census counted every man, woman, child, everybody?
Right.
And that's that total number that you gave us, the 257, whatever. But layered on top of that is this voting age percentage. Can you kind of explain how you take, you're gonna take the total number, but where does that voting age?
Fit in?
Fit in, yeah.
It is used solely to determine the voting strength of a group. And so we're really gonna focus that in a district that has a substantial minority population. If you have a district that has an excess of 50% or more of the population being of a voting age minority, whether it's Hispanic or black or both, and there's also, we have numbers, if you saw in there, for Native Americans and other groups. And you look to determine whether it is a sufficiently large group within a particular district to influence the election, to elect outright a council member or to influence that. And that's what you're looking at with the voting age, because only people that are 18 years of age or older can consider registering to vote. Now, one other set of data that may be useful in analyzing this in the community is the registered voter data. So you have total population, you have people that are 18 years of age, and then you have a certain number of voters that live in your district. And so one other set of data we can provide through the secretaries, because we have it from the Secretary of State, is for each election precinct in your, in your district, I can tell you how many registered voters there are. The Secretary of State also has a machine, a application, a computer application, that allows them to identify how many people that are registered voters have a Spanish surname. In our state, when you register to vote, you don't indicate you're white, black, or Hispanic. But they, because of the large number of Hispanics in Texas, the Secretary of State uses this application. So you can look, for example, if you have a large population of voting age Hispanic population in your district, you can look and compare that to the number of registered voters and their percentage, the percentage of voters that are Spanish surname. It's not gonna be apples to apples. Not every person that has a Spanish surname is a Hispanic. Not every person that is Hispanic has a, you know, a Spanish surname. So you're not gonna have apples to apples, but it helps, and that's what the courts look at. So that's why we use voting age and these other numbers.
Well, and there was one other, in one of the cases, a reference to, I think we called it packing. In other words, if you put all of, or a majority of the African-American voters in one district, then you alleviate the possibility that they, those could be split up into two districts, where they, you could have more representation.
And we need to hear from those communities in some respect as to whether they're aligned in selecting. Because, for example, in, I think District 2 here in Lubbock, and I haven't represented the city prior decades, some places, I've been doing this for 30 years, so I kind of see it grow or change. But here, District 2 seems to have had a history of electing African-Americans with the help probably of both Anglo and Hispanic voters, that there are, there is a crossover voting among everybody to support African-American candidates. Likewise, the Hispanic districts that are in here probably rely, because they're not very strong, solely Hispanic districts, they rely to some greater or lesser extent in crossover voting from African-American and other Anglo voters. So we're gonna rely on, or gather info from you guys about where are your strengths, where, which coalitions exist within your council district, and how do we preserve them? And that's how you, you know, avoid packing, is to make sure we got an understanding of those coalitions.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you sir, for being here today. My question is, because I'm kind of keyed in on the maps, and I'm just trying to really get an idea, because some of those colorings seem to overlap each other.
They're too small, the map's too small, and you need a big, more detail? I think that's, that's a fair statement. I was, I can provide much more detailed maps, if that's helpful to you. And I think, in looking at the complexity of the problem that we're gonna have, I will provide some of those to, through the city secretary.
Thank you. I was just trying to kind of key in on them, and that wasn't quite making sense for me. Even in addition to that, there are some areas that don't necessarily have residents living in them, but they're coded to indicate one way or the other. So I appreciate the larger maps to help us with that. Thank you.
The only, those are done from the census. So if there's one person in the block, and it's the block, the block is miles square, and it has one person in it, and they're black, it's gonna be a green, but the size of it doesn't tell you anything about how many people are there. And that's the hard part.
Thank you sir.
Mr. Mendez, would you go back to page 19? I think it's the three, three or four pages back. It's the one that has the, that page right there. Okay, so let me make sure I understand, the biggest deviation we can have, let's for instance, say that we're able to bring four- instance, say that we're able to bring four and five down to the forty, roughly the forty-two thousand nine fourteen. You still can't have more than nine point nine percent deviation between that one that was at or just above and one that would be that much below. They've all got to fall in that nine point nine.
The difference between the most populous and the least populous has to be nine point, under ten.
Okay, all right.
And so it's a, it's difficult. There are so many permutations of how you can solve that. It's not like one has to be five and one four point nine nine, but you could have one that's eight and one that's one. But it's very difficult, without redistributing population among the six districts, pretty much across the board, you can't get them into ballots. It's just math.
Ms. Joy.
Is it possible for you to do an overlay of what our current districts are?
That's what's in there.
Well, I don't know that that is in there in the initial assessment.
What he sent us were the current districts.
Yeah.
He sent you new maps.
Yeah.
So the initial assessment is just what we have now?
That's, that's just what we have.
All right. I was under the impression that you were...
No, no, I haven't drawn anything, because I can't until you give me some direction. You know, that's the hard part. In some towns, I can tell you how we're gonna fix it in a heartbeat. I need to move one precinct if we're gonna, this is not that town.
Anything else for Mr. Mendez? Okay, so just to summarize, Becky, help me, we're gonna consider two resolutions later today.
Yes, one for criteria, one for guidelines.
We'll get, Mr. Mendez will send us a, individually send us a survey that'll come through the city attorney's office.
That is correct.
We'll have a couple of weeks to respond with that. One of the resolution, one of the resolutions tonight also describes and lists that any citizen input is due either before or during citizen comment period.
November sixteenth.
On November sixteenth, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
And we have a calendar that we're gonna operate under between now and the end of the year. It's, the council's aware of this, but it's something that we will be publishing in the next day or so to citizens, so everybody will know what our plans are.
Right. And all citizen input that we get, we're gonna request that that be in writing. Any plans they get, we'll have to follow the criteria so that they cover the whole, all the districts, not just the district that they're considering.
Right. Okay. Counsel, anything else? Mr. Mendez, anything from you?
No, sir, I'll be here.
Excuse me, one more, Ms. Patterson-Harris has something.
And these are, and I've gone over them, and these are the actual criteria that we're looking at, those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight spaces.
Yeah, that's basically what we've built into the resolution. I'm here throughout the afternoon at the county, working there, and I'll be back for the other, for the session this evening to, in case there are questions about any other
Thank you, Mr. Mendez, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay, item two-two this afternoon is a much anticipated update from our new neighborhood planner. I'll start by turning this over to Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This has been a while coming, but I think we've got a special treat for you today with Mr. Wilson, Bowling. Wilson is our neighborhood planner. He has been on the ground, out in the community, working with neighborhoods, and he's here to give you kind of a status report of where that stands today. So, Wilson, take it away.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for letting me come and speak to you. I also would like to thank a few other people or groups, number one being members of all the various departments of city staff. It has been such a pleasure working with so many great people, but especially, it's amazing at just how much the departments help each other and want to collaborate on things, and that is something that should be commended. I also want to thank the neighborhood associations, because for all the dedication and the hard work that they do, because really without them, this program would be nothing. So all of you from the neighborhoods, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Mr. Bowling, let's ask our neighborhood association presidents, members that are here today for the meeting to please stand up. I think we'd like to recognize you. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a member of the neighborhood association.
I thought you were just stretching your legs, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Okay, Mr. Bowling, please continue.
Well, I guess as we get started, let's go back to kind of the beginning of how we got to this point. So this idea of a neighborhood planning program came out of our comprehensive plan, the Lubbock Plan 2040. If you didn't know, it's actually mentioned in seven separate sections of the comprehensive plan in some shape, form, or fashion. So this is a very, very important thing that people wanted. And I hate reading off slides, but I am gonna read three quotes from the comprehensive plan that kind of sum up the objectives of this program. Number one is to formally initiate a Lubbock neighborhood planning program, to develop a series of neighborhood plans for eastern and northern Lubbock, include extensive public engagement with both citizens at large and eastern and northern Lubbock stakeholders. Number two, to promote housing maintenance strategies and neighborhood associations within existing neighborhoods to increase community involvement and buy-in. The third being to continue to support community and cultural groups in addition to identifying new partners, support existing and future efforts, including plans as city policy. There are quite a few other things, but I believe that all of those are kind of summed up in these three major things. So, I know you lived it, but I'm gonna take you back to the budget last year. With COVID, there was a fear that this program wasn't going to get started yet, that it would be pushed a little bit back. But the council saw the need of this program and were adamant that it continue and start up. And that leads us to me. So I was hired on February the first, or that was my first day here with the city of Lubbock. And I hit the ground running. My number one objective was to foster relationships with those members of the community. I have gone to many neighborhood association meetings, I have gone to many other meetings within the neighborhoods and within the community, trying to get to know people, let them get to know me, and build a sense of trust among us. The second is to identify those potential partners. So I've met with, once again, many different community organizations and just other organizations throughout the city. And then the third is to lay the actual groundwork for this program. It has been several months now, but we have worked very hard, taken our time to make sure that we can do this right. So far, I have attended neighborhood association meetings, the monthly neighborhood association meetings, of ten separate neighborhood associations spanning from east, north, central, and west Lubbock. And I'll be attending the quarterly meeting of another neighborhood association in central Lubbock here in just a couple of weeks. Again, I've met with dozens of community members and many organizations, not all of those are on this list, this is just a number of them. City staff also spent a good month speaking with eight different other cities and their neighborhood programs to see how they work, seven of which in Texas, one of which is out of, out of the state. We discussed several topics, including their program's successes. I don't really like the word failures, but the things to keep our mind on as we work on this program. How some of these projects will be funded, support services for the neighborhoods, and then of course, how are we going to evaluate our successes? After speaking with, with the neighborhoods, we really came, we really figured out that there are three main aspects to a neighborhood planning program. Number one is the monitoring of the neighborhood health, the neighborhood plans themselves, and then also the neighborhood services. So when we go see the doctor, they're going to take our temperature, check our blood pressure, and do a lot of, several small tests to try to get an overall picture of our, our health. The same can be said of a neighborhood. We are looking at several small functions to assess the overall health of these neighborhoods. We call these the key performance indicators. These provide a lot of great information. Number one, it provides great information to you as the council, because we can actually see the state of our neighborhoods, to see which are in great condition, which are in more critical condition, which neighborhoods are on the verge of decline, and maybe we can step in, intervene to make sure that they stay strong. It's also great information to the neighborhoods themselves, because as we work on these plans, we can put our focus on those things that we see that we need to work on. What's nice is we can take those values, we can put it in an easy method to understand a good map for you. But one of the biggest things is we can track all of these small things over time, and that will be a way for us to evaluate how these plans are actually working on not just the individual criteria, but as a whole, health of that neighborhood. The map shown here is the city of Topeka, Kansas. They are the one city outside of Texas we spoke of, or we spoke to. And they have been tracking this data for over twenty years now, to have a full idea of the neighborhood health and how it's changed over time with the efforts that they've done. They use the first five on this list, which are home values, property, poverty, unsafe structures, crime, and homeownership rates. Of course, as we look at this data, we don't have to use these, we can, and it doesn't have to be limited to these five either. I have thrown on three additional things that we could consider, being the condition of the infrastructure or current infrastructure projects throughout the year, building permits that are issued throughout the year, and then we can look at vacant properties. Of course, there could be a lot more, there could be less, it is all up to the council.
Mr. Boeing, go back to that slide for a minute, please.
Yes, sir.
So I understand healthy outpatient and intensive care, at risk doesn't seem to me to, I mean, I mean, I understand what at risk is, but doesn't, that's not really a medical term. Where'd that one come from? Is that just something they did, or is that?
That is something that they did, yes, sir.
No, it's not like a...
I can't speak on how they decided that aspect of it.
Just curious, all right, all right, keep going.
So we get to the second part, which are the neighborhood plans themselves, which I believe is the, the full intention of this program. There are really three types of plans, the small area plans, corridor studies, and the neighborhood plans themselves. The small area plans, kind of, it's almost an umbrella term, which the other two could fall under, but you can also look at areas that are larger than the neighborhood, or perhaps we look at larger commercial areas, those can also fit in there. Corridor studies is we're actually looking at, let's say, the Thirty-fourth Street corridor or the East Nineteenth Street corridor, and then the actual neighborhood plans. Of course, we hope, as we grow this program, that we'll be doing all of those, but right now, our focus is on the actual neighborhood plans, which of course are going to be neighborhood-led, neighborhood-initiated, and neighborhood-created. So we'll be hosting several meetings with the neighborhood, but also with a steering committee that will be set up, including residents of the neighborhood and some stakeholders for those neighborhoods. We'll also create and be working with a technical advisory committee made up of city staff throughout the different departments. I feel that there is no project that is not feasible, that we can't do, but it all depends on when we can start and how long it's gonna take. So to go back to something I said in the very beginning, is it's just how amazing how our staff wants to collaborate on projects. I was approached by the health department, saying, "We are working on a grant for neighborhood health, and it's the perfect time to collaborate and work together on this." As they look at the health of the individuals, we look at the health of the neighborhood themselves, because they are completely interrelated. So thank you so much for thinking of us, working with us, I can't wait to do so many great things with this. So of course, this is a long-term priority. I say that as, a typical plan takes between six and twelve months to create. And then for all the initiatives within that plan, that's going to take years to implement. So we, we also want to start doing some neighborhood services so that we can start helping the One of the first things that I want to focus on, and I've been racking my brain over the last few months, is how to help grow our neighborhood associations. Because the neighborhood associations are the backbone of the neighborhood, but as we are working on these plans, the public participation, the citizen engagement is crucial. If we do not have the members of the neighborhood attend our meetings and help create this plan, it is no longer their plan, it is our plan. So a lot of these aspects are just ways to try to engage the citizens, get them excited, get the neighborhood association stronger and very active. I would like to have the neighborhood associations actually register with the city. The main reason is it's really a way for us to have all the contact information for the leadership of those neighborhood associations, so that all information that is sent to me from the city or the other organizations can get to the right people. But with this, we have some ideas on some great things we can do. You have blessed me with a capital budget for projects. I would like to use a bit of that money for, for some of these things. Number one, there are a couple of grants, and I did make sure that a handout got to you with a couple of these ideas, so I'm not gonna go in too in-depth on them at the moment. But number one would be a matching grant with the neighborhood for beautification purposes. Another grant that I'm extremely excited about is a small five hundred dollar mini-grant for engagement purposes, so any kind of marketing or communications. I also want to host a series of workshops for these neighborhoods. It's a way, number one, to bring the neighborhoods together so that we can all talk about the common issues and try to come up with strategies together, or perhaps some of these issues have already been solved by some of the other neighborhoods. Also a way to, to offer some training to the officers. I know we, we do get new officers into some of these associations, whom, this might be their first time serving on a board. We would like to be able to help train them, and I actually have already started establishing some relationships to hopefully have some partners in that. And then offer some additional education opportunities, and perhaps this is the perfect time for us to promote Lubbock 101 and get these officers within these neighborhood associations into this program, get to know all the different city departments, what their function is, and so that they, we can all build those connections back. Something we are all very excited about, the planning department and the parks department came up with an idea basically at the same time. We both have the goal of getting the residents out, getting them together, having fun, using our parks. So we are wanting to have a neighborhood block party or a pop-up park trailer. In this trailer is gonna be absolutely everything you would need to have a party, the games, tables, chairs, a speaker. And it would be really free for the neighborhood to rent, perhaps a deposit, perhaps ways to make sure that our stuff is safe, but something that the neighborhoods can actually go and use and get things, get things going. It's a great way to motivate the people within the neighborhood and to help build momentum for all of the activities going on. And I think the best part about this is we're ready to go on it. With, with your approval, we can go ahead and buy this trailer and have the neighborhood start throwing parties. An initiative we've seen in several cities now is a partnership between the planning department, the neighborhood services, and codes. We know that there are residents throughout the city that need some help, and not all residents qualify for CDBG dollars, whether they may have too many assets, maybe they live in a floodplain, so they're not able to qualify, but still need help. Some of our physically disabled residents, some of our elderly residents... Some of our physically disabled residents, some of our elderly residents. As Codes goes out and they can help identify these individuals, we as the Neighborhood Planning Department would collect these and also build a volunteer network. At that point, we could have these work weekends, as different organizations or different groups have adopted all these different houses, we can go and tackle all these projects at once. I know in at least one other city, not only do they do houses, they do different community resources, whether that be a project at the school, or beautification at the park, or any other community asset. This would be a perfect just partnership with the actual plans themselves, because if we can do this at the beginning of this initiation, of all the things that we're starting to do from this plan, this is going to build momentum. This is going to make an immediate impact on that neighborhood, making it a more beautiful, a safer place. So we are very excited about this idea. Now, and as I get to the typical place for questions, I have a couple things for you. We need some guidance as staff. As we start looking at these key performance indicators, and I've mentioned them again here, I mentioned before that we don't have to use these, we can add to, we can take away. What is it that you would like us to look at, would like us to track over the next five, 10, 20 years, to determine the health of our neighborhoods? And secondly, where do we begin? We are ready with this grant to hire a consultant to do our first plan and to lay the guidelines for all the future plans. The comprehensive plan does designate that this should be in the eastern or northern Lubbock neighborhoods. Staff would recommend that we actually take a look at these key performance indicators, but this is completely up to you, how you want to choose this neighborhood. So with that, I will open it up to questions and your guidance, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bowen, great work. So let me make sure I've got it right. I know you want comments and input, but from us, you want guidance on these two areas right here.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? I think before we go to questions and input, Council, Sheila and Juan and Jeff, would you guys serve as a subcommittee to work on this? I think we could do more work and cover more ground, and the three of you would work with Mr. Bowen for a meeting or two, and you guys willing to do that? All three of you from neighborhoods that are in the older part of the community, I know those were called out, are you guys okay with that? Okay, so you have a subcommittee right there to help you with that.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'd like you to come back to us maybe no later than one of our November meetings, you give it six weeks or so, but to make a recommendation at that point. Is that soon enough for you?
That should be just.
I would imagine these guys can move as quickly as you can, but let's get some input on the work you're doing now and ask questions as to the work Mr. Bowen's doing. Let's start with Mr. Channis. Juan.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bowen, good presentation. You captured my curiosity, if you will, volunteer network. I love it, but I need a little bit more explanation. My perception is to help, get volunteers to help with whatever the problems may be for that particular home, or what's your perspective on this?
So looking at some of the other cities who have had this and not trying to reinvent the wheel, I have seen that these homes that need help, a list is compiled of the things that need to be done for really code compliance, is the first thing, but additional projects could be added in as well. These are then put on the city's website with a chance for an organization to actually, without knowing the address, "Here is a house with these issues." Some of these issues can be done by the volunteer network themselves, some by, would need a little extra contractor help, like replacing windows. But a group could then go and actually adopt that house. So when we have that work weekend, they know what they need to do.
I like it, because as we all know, there's some families out there that are having trouble just making their utilities, let alone upgrades on their homes, because as we know, that can be very expensive. I like the idea. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Channis. Other comments or questions? Ms. Joy.
I had written down a couple things that, you're asking us what neighborhood in east or north Lubbock. I don't know, my definition of a neighborhood may be different than yours. It might include several neighborhood associations within that neighborhood. And so my question is, or suggestion is, you want to be sure that those associations will work well together, depending on what you ask that neighborhood to be, because they don't always do that. We get very territorial sometimes, and so I would say whatever that area is in east or north Lubbock, just be sure that you've got the neighborhood associations working together at the same time. That's one.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, how much input have you had from Keep Lubbock Beautiful Committee?
I have spoken with Del Rio a few times, but not on this particular.
Well, it just seems to me there's a lot of overlap, even in your presentation, about what you can do to help in neighborhoods to keep Lubbock beautiful. We're not just talking about the thoroughfares, we're talking about the neighborhoods and the places where we live, so I would encourage you to visit with them.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for being here today. Thank you for the contact that you've created and maintained with so many of the neighborhood associations that are in place. I had the opportunity, can't remember then, I guess I slept twice, I think it was 2017, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference in Birmingham, Alabama. So I know that some of the things that you have brought forth to us today are some of the places and some of the things that they tried doing. I appreciate the fact that what you're looking to do as well is work on improving some of the attitudes and mindsets as well, because I think those go hand in hand, not only with what you want to do in the neighborhoods, but also even pitching in the portion about the health of the individuals involved. I, as always, as some of the folks who are here can attest, that I had to kick a lot of things out to the folks who are in the community to help make in those decisions as to which direction to start first. And I think as you continue to engage them, and the mayor has put in place about a few seconds ago, a new committee. And I would imagine that that may be something that you find that comes out of this committee as well, is making sure that we hear from the folks to see exactly where we may start. There may be some commonalities, or some needs and some things or parts of the plan that the neighborhoods want to see happen. So I think that's important, too, that's why engaging with them is so important. I don't doubt that the folks in the communities will be willing to work with each other, because it's no secret, man, they do it anyway. There are neighborhoods from the northern portion that attend meetings, and the neighborhoods on the eastern portion and all of that. So everybody's excited and wanting to see some things happen. So I appreciate the fact that you haven't just been sitting around twiddling your thumbs since February the first, because the best way to get things going is you have to get moving. So I appreciate that for you. I hope that the other members of the committee, the newly formed committee, have similar thoughts about it as well, but I'm looking forward to try to get this thing moving forward, as are the folks who are actually a part of those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, I think really good comments. I, you know, I think it will be interesting to decide if we could do planning at more than one discreet neighborhood level at a time, or if you just need to say, "Here's the order we're going to do them in." And, you know, I know that we were pretty prescriptive in our plan about where we want to start, we want to start with our more at-risk neighborhoods, as I recall that discussion, but we can work that out, I think, and I don't think it's critical that that get worked out on the dice, but I think it can get worked out real quickly. I love your grant proposal, by the way, that you gave us the details of, I think it's fantastic, and, you know, I don't think that requires anything from us, right? You've got that money budgeted correctly, isn't that correct?
I believe so.
Is that right, Brian, is that money budgeted? Yeah, that's fantastic, yeah. Mr. Atkinson.
Mayor, you're correct, the money is budgeted, we will need to pull it out, it's in a capital project to hold it, so that it never goes away. We'll set that up in these grant programs when the time's right.
Okay. It's less than $50,000, but does that come back to us just because it's a capital program?
Yes.
It will, okay, okay, alright, okay. Alright, other questions or comments? Mr. Christian.
And I apologize, you may have covered this when I stepped out just a minute ago, but in these neighborhood units, or however you want to categorize them, do you have some demographic information for us for each one of those neighborhoods out there in regards to age, how many people are living in a residence alone? Some of those information that gives us some better kind of color, so, you know, puts a color and shades to those in regards to who's actually living out there, and it may be able, it may give us some information on what kind of services are needed based upon who's actually living in those neighborhoods.
Yes, sir, that is things that we are going to be collecting, and I will happily share some of that information to you the next time that I come up here.
Anything else for Mr. Bowen? Wilson, I just want to thank you for what you're doing. You're out making a difference. It's obvious by the people I talked to who have met you and seen you in the meetings and going out and engaging in the community, and I think that was the vision that we had when we funded this position, and we're thankful that you're doing what you're doing, okay?
Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you again very soon. Next on our work session agendas, an update from Keep Lubbock Beautiful. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to ask Ms. Brenda Haney to come up and make the introductions for today, and she'll have a featured speaker, and there's a featured guest in the back of the chambers that you might have noticed as well. So Brenda?
Lucky you, you don't have to listen to me today, but it is my distinct pleasure, as we talk about neighborhoods, to introduce a member of our team and the Solid Waste Department that spends a large part of his days working directly with our community. So Del Rio Mullen is our customer service supervisor, as well as our staff liaison to Keep Lubbock Beautiful. He's got a member of his staff in the back of the room that he'll take an opportunity at some point to introduce to you. So, Del Rio?
Hey, Del Rio.
Thank you, and thank you, Council.
Welcome back.
Appreciate it. Now, today I'm just going to go over a brief summary of what KLB does for community outreach and engagement, teaching how to keep it beautiful here in Lubbock, is kind of how I worded it, but I want to give a brief history about Keep Lubbock Beautiful and what we do as far as programs that some folks may not be aware of. So I'm just going to hit some key dates, I'm not going to go too in-depth on anything, but there are four key dates for Keep Lubbock Beautiful. First off, we've been around since 1988, when the city council at the time backed the creation of a standalone nonprofit 501(c)(3) to initiate becoming a local affiliate of both Keep Texas and Keep America Beautiful. That nonprofit incorporation, Keep Lubbock Beautiful Incorporated, went on to become an advisory committee officially in March of 1990, still as a standalone entity working with the city. Unfortunately for that incorporation, it did have to dissolve in September of 2001. Within two months, it was picked up completely by the city, we assumed full responsibility, and Keep Lubbock Beautiful has been part of various departments throughout the city, Parks and Recreation, Community Development, coming back to Solid Waste, most recently from Community Development. Now, the constant between all of these departments and our national and state-level affiliations has been our mission statement, and it's a very simple mission statement, and it's one of the reasons why the council in 1988 wanted a Keep Lubbock Beautiful affiliate, is to educate and engage citizens to take responsibility for improving our community environment. We were putting it on them to kind of come back and take back what they want for the community, and we're going to provide them the resources to do that, whether it's through an education event or if it's providing equipment. We stand on three tenants, and these tenants come down from Keep America Beautiful through the state level as well for all affiliates. First off, the most obvious that we do, litter prevention and abatement. It's kind of the bread and butter for Keep Lubbock Beautiful since 2014. We've kind of taken reins of doing cleanups and assisting neighborhoods with doing cleanups as well as small groups. The second is beautification. Beautification in line with abatement of the litter, but also beautification through public artworks. We are currently working with the East Lubbock Art House and Parks and Recreation Department, the Councilwoman Harris can tell you all about it. We're in Butler Park right now, trying to do a basketball court mural, to kind of liven up the neighborhood. It has a very personal significance to that neighborhood as well. It was designed by a local artist, and we're implementing that right now. We're hopefully, we're about 70% done. If you haven't been out to Butler Park, I highly encourage you to go check it out.
Mr. Mullen, is there any chance that that was what Ms. Patterson-Harris was involved in yesterday? She came up here yesterday afternoon, and she had paint all over her. I think the idea was to paint the basketball court, but it appeared that.
I can tell you, Ms. Councilwoman has been out there quite a bit, and taken quite an investment into this project. This was initially her idea, through a project blacktop. We've just kind of taken the reins as far as handling the logistics and making sure we bring the vision to life. We've also worked with Parks and Rec and other projects, we've worked with community gardens over the years, and as well as tree plantings with the Parks and Rec Department. We hope to do more beautification projects, expanding beyond the green spaces, doing more public artwork, as well as, you know, perhaps helping out any more community gardens who are out there. The third tenant that we stand on is recycling, which we are fortunate in the city of Lubbock to have a dedicated recycling educator and supervisor, Ms. Morgan Erkenbrack. She works with me in Solid Waste. We work together on a lot of projects, we coordinate, because it is one of the tenants, and that is her sole focus. I support her program, she supports mine, in both sharing and participating in creating these programs. Now, from those mission statements, what do we do? Well, we have a few outreach methods that you may be familiar with for Keep Lubbock Beautiful. First and foremost, of course, is social media. Who doesn't have social media? We're only on one social media outlet, it was created in 2015, however, it did not see much use until about 2018. We kicked it into high gear, we increased from just over 100 likes to over 667 likes as of yesterday. Additionally, followers, we only had about 150 followers three years ago, we're up to 815 followers as of yesterday. So we are trying to increase our reach through promotions and our contests, which I'll touch on here in a little bit with our programs. We have paid promotions, and we've also got a few organic viral posts that have gone out there, pictures of animals and whatnot, in coordination with litter. The other thing we do is community events. We participate in community events. There are two major community events that we do that are hosted by private entities within the city of Lubbock. The first we always try to attend is the West Texas Home Builder Association's Home and Garden Show. This year it was held in the beginning of June as opposed to March when it's normally held. This show gives us an audience of people who are homeowners, they have a deep concern and care about their homes and neighborhoods. They're also a large group of professionals here, so we do a lot of networking when we can at this event. This year, we had about 796 individual contacts. That was down from last year, just before the pandemic lockdown, we had about 897 contacts at last year's Home and Garden Show. But the biggest show we do is the Lubbock Arts Festival. We do this every year, unfortunately, it was pushed online last year, we didn't do it in person. This is our favorite show to do, we get both parents and kids, and we get parents who are very interested in teaching their kids the value of beauty, and not only art, but also in their environment. This is a great group of people that we can talk with. This year, we had over 1,433 contacts. To kind of give you a gauge of that, in 2019, we only had 967. This year was the first year I've been able to do National Night Out, and we did the Patterson Library Event this year, it was a two-hour event, awesome event, we had 217 individual contacts in that short two-hour period. It's a fantastic group of people, I'm well familiar with the northeast side of town, being former code enforcement, that was my area, so that's kind of where I cut my teeth with the city, and it's very much a place I like to be. Now, you can see this is our Home Builder Association Home and Garden Show, this was our booth, we are limited to a 10-by-10 booth. The Arts Festival, we get a little more bang for our buck, it's a 10-by-20 booth. But you can see, we do promote similar programs throughout, and I'm about to go through those programs. And we try to tailor what our booths look like based on the crowd we're engaging with. We can get a little looser when it comes to the Arts Festival, because we do have the kids. We are a kid stop, as you see the stop sign there, which means we have arts and crafts, which brings the kids in, so we can hook them, teach them, and additionally, hook their parents and teach their parents. First and foremost, the one we're known for the most is our cleanup program. Neighborhood cleanups, especially. We've done nine individual neighborhoods this year. We've done nine individual neighborhoods this year, which is more than usual. We've had a big increase in the number of interested neighborhoods. I still had two or three neighborhoods who did not participate in any cleanups so far this year. They wanted to. They're just not in a place where they can get their groups together to do so. Off the top of my head, it was the Jackson Neighborhood, as well as the Bayless Atkins Neighborhood. These nine neighborhoods provided about ninety-nine volunteers total. I will say, neighborhood cleanups don't bring as many volunteers as the small-group cleanups. And it could be the time of day we're hosting them. Of course, we do them on Saturdays, so there's a lot going on. We just did the West End Cleanup over at Duran Park, behind Costco, if you're familiar with that area, this past Saturday. I only had five volunteers, and it was the coordinator and his children, unfortunately. But it was homecoming, and they did not consider that when they were handing out the volunteer sheets. But we still filled two roll-offs worth of garbage. And to give you an idea of how much that is, between nine cleanups, we've done over twenty-one tons worth of garbage. And that's illegally dumped items, couches, mattresses, tree limbs. That's items being junked out of backyards and out of homes, which works out to about forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty pounds. Conversely, the small-group cleanups are what we do in parks and right-ofways. We've had eighteen individual small-group cleanups this year. We've had over four hundred and five volunteers. Pretty good turnout. Our biggest volunteer group being the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. They can produce anywhere from fifty to sixty volunteers in a single event to do an hour-and-a-half cleaning. Altogether, they've picked up three hundred and sixty-seven bags of trashed. Keep America Beautiful has a formula for that. Every thirteen-gallon bag of trash picked up, which is what that three hundred and sixty-seven bags represents, is the equivalent of fifteen pounds per bag. So that's five thousand, five hundred and five pounds so far this year picked up by these small groups. To put that in perspective for you, the average person disposes of four-point-four pounds of trash a day. If you break that down even further, that means our volunteers have picked up the single-day equivalent of one thousand, two hundred and fifty-one people's worth of trash. If you want to break it down even more and look at it at a different light, if it's just my trash they're picking up, they're picking up about three-point-four years' worth of my trash. And the numbers we're pulling in this year are a little above average in terms of the small group. I'd say the number of volunteers has exceeded what we normally pull in a regular year. We're normally around one hundred and fifty to two hundred volunteers for small-group cleanups. This year has extremely exceeded. Coming off the pandemic last year, our very first cleanup on June 1st, 2020, when we were out of lockdown and we could do those events, we had a hundred and twenty-two volunteers show up on the east side of town. And I would say only about a dozen of those were actually from the east side of town. We had some great engagement that day. Ten on Tuesday is a program that was implemented in 2018. It is still ongoing. We have tailored it a little different, though. The amount of information being asked for originally was a little much, and if you study marketing, the more information you request from people, the least likely they are going to want to participate. We were asking for their names. We were asking for their email address. We were asking for the name of their organizations. We were asking if they were a school and individual, et cetera. It was a long checklist. We cut that. We made it just an honor pledge. We've gotten a lot of participation out of that. The first two years of Keep Lubbock Beautiful, there was only, or Ten on Tuesday with Keep Lubbock Beautiful, there was only about a hundred and thirty pledges. This year alone, we've had a hundred and twenty-nine pledges, just from the three shows I talked about earlier. We are still promoting this. We're using it as an educational tool. And after speaking with other affiliates at shows and conventions at both the national and the state level, Ten on Tuesday is a program they don't feel is sustainable, but the way they are using it is not sustainable. We are using it as a support program and doing it that way. We really engage the public and the kids. It's a great thing the parents use to get their kids to do something for us. What you're seeing there is actually a card we give them that they can put on their refrigerator or put it in their wallets or whatever they want to do. Our Landscape Recognition Award, I'm going to go through this one. We're kind of in the middle of revamping this award. It used to be monthly and bimonthly. We've changed that. Now, the board has decided that this is going to be a large annual event. This is something that we're going to do. We're going to take away the citizens doing the nominations, which we did not have engagement on, but we're going to ask the citizens to vote on nominees that our eleven-member board puts together for the citizens. To date, we've had nine recipients under the old format. We hope to expand that and to get more citizen participation. We are working with the Owens Group on this to relaunch this program. As you can see, our last event, our last recipient was Luca, which was, I believe, August of last year. Now, our annual art contest is probably one of the favorite things I do, and this program ties into what you see in the back. It all comes together, I promise. We relaunched it this year. We changed it up. We had a hundred and five individual entries. In 2019, under the old system, we only had about forty entries. Twenty percent of these entries of the hundred and five were homeschools, which is something we never really got much of under the old system of reaching out and trying to get entries. We promoted this across the board. I had people in Florida requesting if they could participate in the competition. I told them not for the cash, I'm sorry, but one of our prizes, as you will see, is to be featured on a garbage truck. We have three categories now. We have three age groups: elementary-age children, middle-school-age children, and high-school-age children. We used to do tiered prizes. We took away the tiered prizes, one hundred and seventy-five, fifty. We gave them all a uniform cash prize of a hundred dollars. And of those three, one was picked to be featured on the side of a garbage truck. If you've seen any of our solid-waste trucks around town, there's a handful of them that have artwork from the previous years. We're waiting to get this year's winner, which you will see momentarily, onto the newest truck. There we go. You see Madeline up on the left. That's Katie in the middle. She's one of our homeschoolers. She was studying sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth-grade material, but she's only twelve years old. So we didn't have enough high-school entrance to do the high school, so we chose two middle-school winners. Our Riker is over there on the second, on the, excuse me, to the extreme right, Riker, he's our second-grade winner. And he did a fantastic job using that recycled fish. But that leads directly into what you see behind me. The theme of this year's art contest, and one of the ways we relaunched it, was reduce, reuse, recycle. And we're going to change those themes every year to kind of rejuvenate the entries we're getting. We encourage the kids to submit either a 2D or 3D piece of artwork that promoted or utilized reused materials. So what better way to do that than to create something of our own? Which falls in line, which is not moving, there we go, which falls in line with the creation of our mascot. And this is what we're hoping to further us in FAR's engagement goes. This is our new tool. This is Jacques LePon. He is the rabbit that you see back there piloting that monstrosity. He was introduced officially at this year's Lubbock Arts Festival. Here's Jacques, featured with one of the aliens that was at the Arts Festival. Here he is. We visited everybody, Jacques and I, Wonder Woman, some Star Wars characters, a wizard. But we also visited the Buddy Holly Center, did a little bit of traveling around Lubbock. Jacques's got a unique story. Jacques was, in all actuality, a vacant, a stuffed toy that was dumped in a vacant lot, found by a solid-waste employee. It happens to be the one standing before you. Jacques was recruited into helping me at Solid Waste and Keep Lubbock Beautiful. Now, if you know French very well, Jacques LePon basically means Jack Rabbit. And Jacques chose that name because his favorite book, it was a nighttime story. His former owner used to read all the time. It was The Little Prince. And his favorite character was the pilot, which is why he is dressed as a pilot, as you can see there. His equipment is made out of recycled goods. That was a recycled high-visibility bag. And the goggles were made out of recycled yogurt cups and pieces of the bag as well. Now, Jacques was not our original design. I did make some modifications to make him our own, but we are working on getting a proprietary design done. This was my initial sketch that I sent over to a contractor we're working with to help design a new three-dimensional Jacques. This is what they've submitted so far. This is much smaller than our current Jacques. It does lose a little bit of the charm, not having the actual recycled goods, but we can easily modify that when it does come in. Now, what Jacques is sitting in behind me, which was what we use to kind of promote all three of our tenants through our art contest, was his robot, which we call Tree, transforming roll-off-enabled eco-mech. And I know it takes a geek to create such a thing, and I am a geek, and I say that proudly in front of this council. But we used a PVC skeleton, repurposed cardboard, plastic bottles, yard signs, bottle caps, plastic packaging, you name it, loads of hot glue. This was started in the winter of 2019. The pandemic pumped the brakes on that until June of this year, when we kicked it back up and finished this thing. We wanted to create something that looked like a kid could do it. We wanted to engage with the kids. I wanted them to be able to touch it. I wanted them to be able to move his hands, open and close his hands. Wanted Jacques to be able to travel. That chair comes off with a crane arm on it, and I take that to shows. It's a lot easier to move that than to move that whole thing, trust me. This is the second time I've had to move that whole thing to show to an audience, and I'm happy to do it. You can see the progress here. The idea, again, was to encourage children and their parents to look at trash in a different light, as we did with our annual art contest. This was something they could see and touch. A lot of the interactions we got at the Arts Festival, we were told by Elizabeth Regner, who oversees the Arts Festival, that we are one of the top trending sites to visit. People were taking pictures with our little robot, and most of the comments that I were hearing were, "Why can't we build that? Why can't we make something like that?" "Well, don't you want to do something like that?" "Hey, we've got cardboard boxes in the garage packed up." Styled up, or stacked up, excuse me. And that's exactly what we were trying to get, and that's what we're hoping this character will do. We've worked with the comms and marketing department to develop coloring sheets and things of that nature. A lot of this, we're kind of doing, I'm doing on my own. We are working with outside sources, and we are trying our best to increase engagement with kids. Especially now, it's working with our recycling supervisor who does a lot of programs directly in schools and libraries. This is a great way for us to segue into it. That's what I pretty much had to focus on today, so I am open to any questions or concerns you may have about the board and our programs.
Okay, Council, that's a lot of information. Who wants to, any comments or questions on this? Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mullen, thank you very much for the information today, and these are fantastic programs. We had a program at one time I was involved in, and I think COVID got in the way. And that was Texas Tech...
Tech to Town.
Tech to Town program. Is that, is that still on your list with tech student government?
Unfortunately, I have not heard from them this year. After the first year, I took over coordination with Stuart when I was still in codes, and I was working with these students every year. The last I heard with them was right before tech decided they were going to stay locked down. And I have not heard from them since, unfortunately. So to kind of supplement that, and I didn't touch on it with the cleanups, we were going to try and do our own large-scale cleanup event across the city of Lubbock. We had this ready to go in 2020. I had multiple departments lined up: in streets, codes, Parks and Rec. We were all going to work together to do a week-long event, Monday through Saturday. We are going to have six additional satellite roll-off sites in addition to the four we have year-round. We are going to put these towards the center, north, and east of the city, so they were more accessible to folks living in the middle of the city, since the majority, our four convenience stations are in the outskirts of most of the residential areas that would utilize them. This event would have been city-manned roll-offs available from eight to five, Monday through Saturday, as a way to encourage neighborhoods to create their own events around it, but also to take advantage of tech students leaving, tech students coming in. We were trying to time it that we would line it up with the outgoing spring semester, that tech students could use that. So we did have roll-offs in tech terraces. We had them in parks of North Lubbock. We had two in different, two areas of East Lubbock. We had just because our municipal site is so far away from those folks, saying Yellow House Canyon. We tried to do it again this year. We thought about it. We talked about it. The demands of our everyday staffing requirements to do our regular jobs was a little overwhelming this year. So we put that back, and we're hoping to do this next year with the Great American Cleanup. We lined this up with Keep America Beautiful, which has their events start from the first day of spring till the end of May, beginning of June. So we're trying to harness that. We want to jump in on that momentum. We want to make it a citywide event, which I know may have been done before. I haven't, in my recent history being with the city, which is near in eight years, I've never heard of a citywide cleanup in Lubbock. I know a lot of counties do it. A lot of smaller towns do it. It's asking a lot from our staff, but if we give the opportunity, it's a great opportunity also to educate people as far as what you can do and where you can put things and not just dump them in the alley. Illegal dumping is one of the biggest things. I've been fighting it since I was in code enforcement. I'm fighting it now in Solid Waste. Trash has been my life, my eight years with the city of Lubbock. And I'm more than happy to educate folks on what needs to be done with it. So I want to see Tech to Town come back. The last time we did Tech to Town, we had near seven hundred students, excuse me, volunteer between four city parks. In addition to everything else they were doing, all the other volunteers, we got about four hundred and fifty to five hundred of those seven hundred volunteers at city installations. City Bus was involved in that. We had codes handing out the equipment that KLB was providing. We do provide the grabbers, the vests, gloves, and trash bags. So, long answer to your question, but I have not heard from the student body, unfortunately. I've been in contact with some of the senators that they have on campus in the hopes of spreading some more word about what is available to them and what we can do. That was a student initiation, or a student initiative, and so far, no one's picked it up, to my knowledge.
And I think it really helps, because the education of those students, understanding what the problem is across this community. And so I hope that we can reinvigorate that.
Yes, sir. I will tell you, Lubbock Christian University...
Let me know how I can help, because I feel like that, that program is a very good program. We started well years ago, and I would like to see it brought back.
Lubbock Christian did their first event, their freshman, their incoming freshman. We had about four hundred volunteers. The Volunteer Center of Lubbock was coordinating. We got about eighty of those volunteers at one of our parks. We hope that's a program that keeps going, too. That's the first time Lubbock Christians reached out to us about doing a large-scale cleanup event.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Christian?
First, I want to say I admire anybody that would admit that trash is their life. That's a pretty bold statement, you know. But I understand where you're coming from, because it's true. I would love to see you try to make that annual event happen, that one-day event that would be citywide. I think it's so important. Once you get the energy of that started, I think it almost becomes self-sustaining. People look, look forward to that event each year, and it's such a teaching environment for our kids to go back to where we, in my opinion, where we once were, where we picked stuff up off the ground, and you put it in the trash can. And most importantly, I see so many commercial and retail stores in our community that they have trash cans, but they're always overflowing. And kids drive by, walk by them, and what kind of statement does that make to our children? So I'm, I'm with Councilman Griffin, anything I can do to help make that happen. And I think there's some other organizations and entities that you probably have thought of to bring into this, this project and this opportunity. But I was talking with Mr. Van Gundy just the other day about our Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, even Boys and Girls Club, any of those organizations that are already, already there and looking for projects to do. And I think that this would be a worthy project for those organizations to be a part of. Even our neighborhood associations, I think that's what we were getting at just a little while ago when somebody asked if this, if the Keep Lubbock Beautiful, I think the mayor actually mentioned that, if Keep Lubbock Beautiful was a part of the neighborhood program that was, presentation that was just made. I think that we have a real opportunity to do something that is, is dynamic and sustainable that will be beneficial to every, every corner of our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Del Rio, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate the work that you do within the Lubbock community. I appreciate the, the work that you do alongside of so many of the neighborhood associations that have called upon Solid Waste and Keep Lubbock Beautiful to help them get a handle on some of the dumping that takes place in some of these communities. So I appreciate it. I'm not partial, but I do, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your willingness to connect with whomever finds himself in, 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 sitting before you to, to go alongside of them, to take part in some of the projects that are able, are put in place to improve so many of the areas. I want a special shout-out to you on the mural project. I appreciate that. It's getting so much, so much attention over there in the neighborhood. So much so, and I just have to share this, that there was a young lady that came by. She owns one of the new convenience stores over that area. They're interested in getting a mural put up on their wall. So stuff like that, that if it has an impact on someone else, some passerby, or wanted to do some things different, adding some color and some beauty to the space, I think it's great. So thank you so much for what you do, and you've got my support as you continue to push these communities forward to keep things beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Mr. Del Rio, you touched on this briefly, but yes, prior to 1988, we did have, the city of Lubbock had a very active Keep Lubbock Beautiful program in the seventies. I know I was there. And we were associated with... And we were associated with Keep America Beautiful, Texas, all of those things. And I do think your comment about tying our cleanup to theirs is very important, because they tend to be able to advertise and get out front.
Yes.
And we can just, you know, tag on to that. And I think that would be a very good way to do it. The other thing is, when you have these cleanups in our districts, be sure and let us know. As councilpeople, we can help you. We know people in those districts. And I don't think anybody appears too good to get out there and help. Okay? So just let us know. Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just wanted to follow up that comment with Ms. Joy. Now, now, some of us be getting out there, getting it done. And I even want to, uh, uh, give a shout-out to the mayor, who came out to one of the cleanups over there in Parkway Cherry Park. So it, it goes down over a district, too. Thank you.
I went over there thinking it was going to be, you know, picking up a little bit of trash and, you know, two, two, uh, two dumped, excuse me, two trash trucks. And three and a half hours later, they let me go. And one of them is Haney's, a solid waste drivers kept, they just kept bringing those trucks back, you know? That's right. Other comments?
Well, I will say this. He makes it sound like fun. Come on.
You know, Del Rio, I was talking to a citizen the other day who moved here a few years ago. But he, he remembers where he grew up, that when the teen court that operated out of the municipal court, so when, you know, when a, when a, when a, you know, 16 or 17-year-old often gets a, you know, that first driving, that first, you know, moving violation, that one of the options it was offered was to spend time doing, doing a cleanup. I don't, I don't know if we've ever done anything like that. I thought it was, I thought it was a brilliant idea, you know? It's, it's a, first of all, there's, there's an unending setting. Had a couple of those myself, both as, as a teenager and barely remember, and as a parent. I just, I'm just curious what your thoughts are about something like that.
That's something, Keep Lubbock Beautiful in the past, and when I took over the program three years ago, as far as being the liaison, wasn't as proactive as much as it was reactive. It was a support mechanism. So a lot of the onus for promoting and recruiting volunteers fell onto the neighborhood association. And Keep Lubbock Beautiful would assist logistically, show them where to go, give them contacts so that they could increase their network. So with the Great American Cleanup, we're hoping to start up something where we are more proactive. We are looking for programs. Under the Ten on Tuesday campaign, I am hoping to form a group of cleanup hitmen, I guess you could say. I do get a lot of requests for small neighborhood streets and right-of-ways where it's not going to take a full two-hour cleanup with 40 volunteers. But if I had a crew of 10 who could spend an hour out there, they could get it looking really well. And there is plenty of people who would volunteer to do it. And as the STAR program is any proof, working with code enforcement, there's plenty of people out there we could force to do it as well, to put it in a different way. But it is something I would definitely consider. We've had folks looking for community service hours pop at our events. And usually, they're referred to the homeowner, or the neighborhood association, or homeowners association, to sign off on it, because it is their event. They take ownership of those events. And we are there as a support mechanism.
Thank you. Ms. Joy?
You might just remind Judge Hernandez and his staff that you have some unique opportunities for people when he needs to be creative. Just remind him, because I think he would like to hear them.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, we could assign, we could assign somebody to work the, it's, I know it belongs to Tech to Town, but I know they'd love our help. But the, just north of the Walmart, under that, that, in my opinion, the most challenging part of town is that the Marsha Sharp and Avenue Q intersection right there, for whatever reason, it's, um, we just got, we have lots of trash there. And it's a very highly-traveled intersection. And I know we pick it up, and we have to pick it up again. But you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate your leadership. It's very refreshing. Thanks for, for acting, for all of you for acting when tech shut their recycling program down to step in and fill the gap. We appreciate that. And, you know, I think we'd love to see good ideas. One of the things we probably need to figure out a way to, to solve is bulky items, because we don't have a solution for that. And that means they get thrown in alleys or in vacant lots. And I'm, I think this council would be responsive to a program that said, hey, second Tuesday of every month in this district, whatever it may be, just where we could pick up Mr. Atkinson loves knuckleboom trucks. And, but, but I, I just think we have to find a way to do things differently if we're going to get different results. And I think we know what the one definition of insanity is. And, you know, we're sort of doing something over and over and over, so. Final word for Ms. Joy here.
There are specific times that we have more problems with those objects. It's when tech is out, or the universities are out, and the kids get rid of their stuff, or they move in. So we know there are specific times, and I bet you all can track those by the activity, that we need to concentrate on it more.
Yes, ma'am. Most certainly.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have one final item in work session today, and it's to hear from the Health Department. And I'll let Mr. Atkinson introduce Ms. Wells.
Ms. Catherine Wells, Director of Public Health. Rarely seen, oh, sorry. Often heard. Well, council, I think, as all of y'all know, Ms. Wells and her team have really kind of borne the lion's share of what we've been through for now the last 18-plus months. Catherine's group has taken now the next step to help our community out, certainly related to COVID, but not only for COVID. So Catherine's going to talk to us today about her mini hub, a little bit on statistics. Counsel, you do have an item on your work session, I mean, sorry, on your consent agenda later tonight, that's a ratification of the lease for this facility that she was able to open, really in pretty much record time. So Catherine, if you'd start us through that, please?
No, thank you. How do I change this? Should this be up here?
It should have been minimized down below as a PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Upper right-hand corner, is that yours, is that yours up there?
Oh, there it is. Thank you.
You're welcome.
My first time doing a PowerPoint in front of you all. Close that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. First, I wanted to start off with giving us a little update on where we are with our vaccination rates, and then move into where we are with our hub site that actually opened last week, and we're very excited about it. The vaccination status of individuals in Lubbock County, we're at 58% of our community who is eligible to receive a vaccine has actually received one dose. 50% of those are now fully vaccinated. So we've hit that 50% mark. Half of our community who is eligible to receive a vaccine is now fully vaccinated. We are lagging behind the state of Texas. The state of Texas, 72% of eligible Texans have received at least one dose. And we're seeing higher vaccination rates, both along the border and in our larger urban areas. So here in Lubbock, we still have a large number of individuals that remain unvaccinated. We have 109,000 adults who have not started their vaccination series. And then we have 48,000 children that are, are not eligible for vaccine at this time. When we go and look at our percent vaccinated by age, we can see that our older groups have a significantly higher vaccination rate. Those over 60 years old are all over 80%. And a lot of the goals with vaccination rates are to ensure that we get 70% of our population vaccinated. So our older adults are doing great. We are lagging behind in those younger groups, especially the 12-to-29-year-olds. Well below 50% vaccinated at this time. And we really want to focus on getting those groups vaccinated also. So the goal of our mini hub is really to focus on getting vaccines to those who haven't been vaccinated yet, so that 107,000. Be ready to provide vaccine at, any booster vaccine when that becomes available. And then third, also be ready for vaccines when vaccines are available to children. So we opened our vaccine mini hub. This will be open for at least three months. It's going, it's located at Cap Rock Court Shopping Center. It's in the old Blockbuster, for those who have lived in Lubbock for a while. And the address is 2801 50th Street. And we tell people it's right at the intersection of 50th and Canton. So nice location, big parking lot, lots of space to provide vaccine.
It's nice of Blockbuster to let you move, let you use it for a little while.
Yeah. It still had the Blockbuster paint on it. We did paint over that. So the hours of operation right now are going to be Wednesday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And then we're also open the first and third Saturdays from 10:00 to 2:00. And as we see more groups become eligible for vaccine with boosters and children, we will be expanding those hours. So what's available at the mini hub? This is actually more than what was available at the Civic Center. So we're going to be providing COVID-19 vaccine, all brands, at the hub. And all brands will always be in stock. We're also going to be providing flu vaccine at this clinic, both standard and high-dose vaccines. High-dose vaccines are recommended for individuals 65 and older. We'll also be providing Texas Vaccine for Children, the TVFC program. This is our children's vaccine program for children that are either enrolled in Medicaid or uninsured. So those kids can come in and get their vaccines for free. And then, starting next week, we will be opening, we'll be moving our hub, our vaccine site from Clap Park to the hub. And we'll be offering both COVID-19 and flu testing. So individuals who are ill will actually be able to determine whether or not it's COVID-19 or a flu infection. And that will start next week. And then I wanted to review, there's a lot of confusion out there about who's eligible for vaccines at this time, and who's eligible for a booster and a third dose. So this is a chart that the state put together that I think does a pretty good job of explaining what's available. So the primary series of vaccine, this is those initial doses that most of us received at the Civic Center. And for Pfizer and Moderna, those are both two-dose series. And we take them either 21 or 28 days apart. And then the other primary dose is the Janssen, or the J&amp;J vaccine. That's one dose. About a month ago, the FDA approved an additional or a third dose. And this is a dose specifically for individuals who are immune-compromised. And they're supposed to receive it 28 days after they got their second dose. So if this was available when we were running the Civic Center in the spring, we would have seen people come in three months in a row to get those vaccines. It's very, it's only available for those who are immune-compromised. And then what happened last week was we saw the approval of booster doses for Pfizer. So right now, individuals who are 65 and older, or residents of a long-term care center, it's highly recommended that they receive a booster dose, which is given six months after they receive, complete their initial series. And then those booster doses are also available to individuals who work in high-risk settings. So people that work in healthcare, criminal justice, education, any place where you don't have large groups of people gathering together are eligible for that booster. At this time, we do not have boosters available for Moderna or Janssen, J&amp;J. We expect information to be released tomorrow and Thursday about what those recommendations will be from the FDA. And with that, I can answer any questions about vaccine or any of our other COVID work.
Anything for, questions for, for Ms. Wells? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several, Ms. Catherine. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, okay. What has the traffic been like at the hub? Has there been a steady flow? What's it been like over there?
We are giving about 60 vac, 60 patients a day. Half of those are COVID vaccines, and the other half are individuals coming in to get their children vaccinated.
Okay. My next question is, when you speak of the immune-compromised, who are, what are those groups? What are those immune-compromised groups?
Those are, it's going to be individuals that are on active cancer treatment, or take a steroid that suppresses their immune system. And they should really speak to their doctor about whether or not they should be getting that third dose.
So those would be the only two basic, or there's some other?
Yes. It's steroids, HIV, cancer, a recent transplant recipient. But people with very critical medical needs, severe medical needs.
I, I just wanted to be clear and have folks hear what those are, because some may fall into that, or may not, and may think that they are immune-compromised. How do we, how do citizens get in to get not only the COVID vaccines, but also the flu and the other items? What, what's the process?
This is a 100% walk-in clinic. It's set up very similarly to what we had at the Civic Center. You walk in, you tell the first person you run into what you need. You're given a clipboard with that paperwork. You sit down, fill out your paperwork, and then you're seen by one of our nurses.
And the reason I ask that, there's been, I've had a lot of conversations with folks, because a lot of people wanting to really get in and get as many vaccines as they can, and get them taken care of. And a question along those lines is, are there any additional vaccines that we may be looking at to provide at the hub, and even at the Health Department as a whole?
At the hub right now, we're really just focusing on the COVID and the flu for the adults, and then the vaccine for children, because so many children are, got behind on their vac, on their regular vaccinations during COVID. We do have pertussis vaccine, tetanus vaccine, available for adults at the Health Department. And some of that's available at the hub, too. It's just a much smaller group.
Does that include the shingles?
Shingles, yes. But for those adult vaccines, they're provided to us by the state, so I have to follow eligibility rules. And those individuals have to be uninsured to receive those vaccines at the hub. Whereas the COVID and the flus for anybody in the community.
Thank you. That, that's good information. And like I said, I had to entertain some of those conversations out in the community. So I'm glad that you're here today, and glad that you've answered those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Wells. Thanks for what you guys continue to do for our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay, counsel, that concludes work session for today. I, we have one poll tonight. That would be Item 78, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson? Counsel, is that correct? Any other polls? That's it? Item 78. It's on page 233. We do have need for an executive session today. City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to hold consultation with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the purchase exchange lease or value of real property under Section 551.072. And finally, to discuss personnel matters under Section 551.074, all of the Texas Government Code. It is 2:55. Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session.
Good afternoon. It's 5:19. The Lubbock City Council has returned from executive session. We will commence with our ceremonial items, followed by our regular meeting. We will start tonight, as is our practice, with an invocation. Following the invocation, we will have the pledges to the U.S. and Texas flag. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Ryan Smallwood with the Aldersgate Church. Following Pastor Smallwood's prayer, the Mayor Pro Tem will lead us in the pledges. If everyone would please rise.
Mayor, City Council and staff?
Mayor, City Council, and staff, thank you for the invitation. Let's pray together. God, we give you thanks for this day, and we give you thanks for the opportunity to gather together in this place here this afternoon. We thank you for governant, governant. We know that you ordained it, and so, God, we know that you have placed these on this bench for such a time as this. And, God, so because of that, we pray that you would give them all the wisdom that they need to govern justly. God, we know that you knew of the items that would be on today's agenda long before we did, and so, God, we pray that your will would be done in each and every one of them. God, we just pray for the places in our nation and in our world right now where we are so deeply divided. And, God, we pray that you would forgive us for times that we have not loved our neighbor as we've loved ourself. And, God, we pray that in those places where we're divided, you would help us to find unity. And in places we can't find unity, God, help us to strive for charity, for love, for kindness, and respect, and that we would treat others the way that we want to be treated. God, we pray for those that are still struggling from the pandemic, physically, financially, spiritually, mentally, emotionally. God, we pray for healing, and in your name, we pray that you wipe this virus off the face of the earth. And, God, we pray again for our time here tonight. We thank you for Jesus, for his death on the cross for us, most importantly, that he rose from the tomb to give us life, and it's in his name we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledges to the American and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Pastor Smallwood, thank you very much. We appreciate you. Mayor Pro Tem, thanks for leading the pledges. And I'll ask you if you will begin our, we'll move to our proclamations and presentations. We have a couple of these tonight. The first one is a special recognition in support of National Arts and Humanities Month. Mr. Massengill.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to do the National Arts and Humanities Month. I know we have a lot of people here for this recognition this evening, so if you're here, how, how many is here for, for this recognition today? That's right. Come on up here. And where's Stacy Keith? Come on up here, Stacy. So while y'all are coming up here, I'll prep this. October is National Arts and Humanities Month, and we are here to present a proclamation to Stacy Keith, Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation Director. Although we celebrate in October, art, music, dance, theater, and literary events in Lubbock occur all year round, we're proud to have a rich heritage of world-class art and artists in Lubbock and a unique and thriving art community. The arts contribute to the quality of our culture and to the quality of life in Lubbock. They provide opportunities to get out and enjoy Lubbock in a unique way. The arts are diverse in Lubbock, and so there are always new opportunities to gather, celebrate, and enjoy them. Let's not forget the way the arts contribute to Lubbock's economy. The arts and artistic businesses and events generate economic activities, people, bring people to our city, and support local businesses which provide a livelihood to our residents. I want to thank everybody and every organization that contributes, supports, and is involved in our arts community. And with that, I am pleased to read this special recognition. Whereas the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation and Lubbock's local arts organizations are joining together to celebrate National Arts and Humanities Month by safely hosting several special events during the month of October, as well as continuing to host creative and remarkable cultural arts events throughout our city all year round. And whereas Lubbock has a rich history and heritage of creating world-class artists, musicians, performers, and writers, by supporting and enhancing Lubbock's art, culture, and entertainment experiences, and by promoting Lubbock's many cultural arts facilities, museums, performance venues, festivals, and other special events, the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation and the many art organizations who are represented here continue this legacy and provide opportunities for the public and for the generation of outstanding artists from Lubbock. And whereas National Arts and Humanities Month serves as part of the community-wide effort to bring citizens together through Lubbock's local art, music, dance, theater, and film pursuits. By celebrating the arts, we celebrate Lubbock and Lubbock's amazing cultural and artistic legacy, which has helped shape our humanity, fosters social discourse, and strengthens our ability to make positive changes in our city and in our lives. And whereas it is appropriate to honor the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation and Lubbock's many local art organizations, whose creative efforts and artistic endeavors make our city a special place for our citizens to live, work, and enjoy their lives. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the great city of Lubbock, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Lubbock, and ask all citizens to join us in celebrating the power of arts in bringing people together and building a new world. It's dated today, and it's signed by the mayor and all the members of the Lubbock City Council. Stacy, I'll put this to you. You're welcome to say two words. Thank you for saying that.
Just want to say thank you so much for this honor. Our music, arts, and museum and cultural facilities are the lifeblood of this community, and couldn't, and these people that are here with me are what makes Lubbock such a great place to live. So thank you all very, very much.
All right, don't move. Do we get a picture, or do you want a picture? How do you want us?
I thought we were going to pause for a small speech by everybody that's here tonight.
Oh, well, we could start with this one right here. I don't have a very good speech.
I thought we'd start with Vernita. Yeah.
All right. You want to compress around the podium there?
Yeah, we're not going to give Jim Douglas the, I'm not sure, we'd pass over Douglas, but.
Great. Thanks for putting that down, everybody.
Thanks, Limmel.
See you, Darren. See you. We, we've got one other special recognition tonight, and it's in support of National Community Planning Month, and Ms. Joy is going to lead the way on that. Latrell?
This is in recognition of the National Community Planning Month, and since our planning department's been a little busy this year and last, and so I need the planning department people to come up. I bet you've got some. Yeah, there you go. The city of Lubbock has been very active in community planning efforts. We finished the twenty forty plan, which is a comprehensive plan for the future. We're in the process of develop, drafting, actually redoing, the Unified Development Code, and we have the first neighborhood planning program. So they've been very, very busy. That's on top of attending Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and dealing with all the developers and builders and people who need their permits and all of those things. And so they probably don't get a lot of recognition unless somebody's unhappy, and then you get all kinds of recognition. But we appreciate their efforts. We're knee-deep in the UDC right now, the Unified Development Code, and it's taking a lot of time from all of the, all of the staff. Where's Jessica? Don't you want to come up here with your people? These are your peeps, okay? Okay. This special recognition, whereas while change is constantly affecting all cities, community planning can help cities manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work, live, and spend their leisure time. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making the kinds of choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the best planning processes utilize public officials, citizens, stakeholders, and a qualified staff to examine current planning efforts, as well as to assess future land use and transportation needs in order to accommodate change and growth within our city. And whereas recently, the city of Lubbock completed Plan Lubbock Twenty Forty, a comprehensive plan for the future, and is now following the adopted implementation strategies by drafting a new Unified Development Code and creating, creating the city's first neighborhood planning program. Do we have you up here too? There you are. I see you. Okay. All right. This important work utilizes the input and contributions of the city council, city boards and committees, citizens, stakeholders, and the dedicated hard work of the city of Lubbock's planning department. And whereas across the United States, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month, and is therefore an opportunity to recognize Lubbock's planning department for their professionalism, high standards of excellence, and efforts to make a positive impact upon the economics, tourism, traffic, quality of life, health, safety, and sense of place within the Lubbock community. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock, do hereby recognize National Community Planning Month and call upon all citizens to recognize the important contributions the city of Lubbock planning department makes in the quality of life in our lives and in our community. Dated this twelfth day of October, two thousand twenty-one, signed by Mayor Dan Pope and all the members of the city council. So congratulations to you all. Steve, Jessica, Brian, you all want to say a word or two? Okay.
Absolutely. No, Mayor and Council, thank you so much for this recognition. Our planning department works very, very hard, day in and day out, to not only meet the needs daily of our residents that need zoning changes or need building permits, but also to write the documents that are going to guide our future for many years to come. It is a true privilege to work with these people, and we are very appreciative of their efforts. So thank you for the recognition as well.
After thirty-three years, not all in Lubbock, but thirty-three years working for municipalities, I tell you, I've never seen a group that works harder under stricter deadlines with a better attitude than the group of people that we have in the planning department right now. It is a tough job. No one really realizes, you know, just exactly what they're up against, particularly with the growth that we've got right now, the special projects, and then just keeping the development process moving, continually moving. They really do deserve recognition, much more than what they, what they get. So I'm very, very proud of them, glad to be part of it.
Thank you.
Steve.
Brian, did you want to say something?
I'll just announce the folks that are here with me today, starting from my left with Councilwoman Joy. Jacob Hawkins, he's one of our planners. Wilson Bowling is our new neighborhood planner. You got the opportunity to hear from him this afternoon. Let me move. Ashley Voskis, one of our planners. Karen Edwards, our development technician, and Kathy Flood, our management assistant. We're also missing Kristen Sager, our planning and zoning manager, Shane Spencer, Bailey Schillings, and Aslan Henry, who are all three planners, and then Maria Villagranos, our other management assistant. I just want to thank these folks for everything that they do all day. They make me look good, so I really appreciate everything that they do.
Yeah, come out, get out for a picture. Don't act like you don't have your picture taken, okay?
Thank you.
Congratulations and thanks for what you do. It's, we're, we're experiencing unprecedented, at least in the last several decades, three or four decades, growth, and you guys are right on the front line for that. We appreciate all that you're doing for, for our community. Before we go to our regular meeting, I would like to remind everyone that tomorrow, the city and our Health Department, along with partners across our community, are sponsoring the Source to Solution Symposium at the Lubbock, at the Civic Center. And it's a, an opportunity to talk about the challenges that face our community that relate to addiction, and more importantly, to recovery. And our peer, Randy Christian, has led the way in this effort again this year, and it's a, it's a day chock full of activity, and I hope you maybe could, citizens, whether you're here tonight or watching online or on TV, could, could join us tomorrow for that. It is five thirty-five. I'll call the Lubbock City Council into order in our regularly scheduled meeting. Today is the twelfth of October, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting has been called as required by state law. Our first item in our regular meeting is item five, citizen comments. We have no citizens that have signed up to speak tonight, so we'll move to item six. Item six are the, are minutes. Beginning on page one oh one, there are three sets of minutes that were delivered with this agenda book. Those are the minutes from the July twentieth, two thousand twenty-one Special City Council Meeting of the Transportation Policy Committee, the August twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one Si, Special City Council Meeting at the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one Regular City Council Meeting. Council, to begin discussion on these, or to get, begin consideration on these minutes, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Massengill, and the second, Mr. Chides. Are there additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay. All those in favor of, of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. We'll move now to item seven. Item seven is the consent agenda. Items considered to be routine are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council does desire to discuss an item, the item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Tonight, we've had one item that has been pulled from the consent agenda. That is item seven eight. I'll pause for a moment. Council will make certain that there's, that's correct. Okay. They believe that is correct. So I'll open the floor for a motion to, to approve the consent agenda save for item seven eight.
So move.
Got a motion from Mr. Chides, a second from Mr. Griffith. That's a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item seven eight. And all those in favor of that motion, please indicate your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And your opposition by the same side. Motion carries seven to zero. We'll move now to item seven eight. Item seven eight's on page three thirty-three. It's a resolution from Public Works regarding an agreement with Lubbock County to do some work on North University. Let's get a quick, tell you what, let's get a motion to begin consideration of this, and then we'll get a quick presentation from staff. Is there a motion, Mr. Chides?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Franklin's going to give us a presentation that a topic we have discussed now for a little over a year, cooperative opportunity that I think is going to be a great improvement. Wood, if you would.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening, Mr. Franklin.
Here's a brief presentation, believe it or not, just one slide. But this is a project, as our, our city manager pointed out, this has come before you before, but this is a project that's going to take place in our two thousand twenty-two street maintenance program to Mill and Relay North University between Marshall Sharp Freeway and Clovis Highway. This project's estimated a little over, about one point eight million dollars. What you have before you today is a joint funding agreement with the city and Lubbock County to participate in this project on a fifty-fifty up to a two million dollar, two million dollar cap. The project's actually scheduled to be completed as a, in two thousand twenty-two, in about the summer of two thousand twenty-two, that's when the work's going to start happening. Like I mentioned, what's before you today is just a funding agreement to accept some county funds to participate. If you recall back in October of two thousand twenty, last year, council, along with Lubbock Commissioners Court, adopted a resolution just supporting this project, knowing it was forthcoming. Prior to that, we had a project with city funds and went to the MPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization Funds, to do improvements in this corridor. Those improvements were basically behind back of curb. They redid the curb and gutter, they redid the sidewalk. They redid the curb and gutter, they redid the sidewalks, street lighting, and some ADA improvements. What was left out was the actual street pavement on that project, and that's what we're proposing to do this next year in our street maintenance program. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I'll let Mr. Chides begin. Mr. Chides?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wood. I pulled this item because I wanted to inform the public as to what is fixing to happen, how long it's taken to get this wheels turning, and also bring to light the County Commissioners' Court, particularly Mr. Flores, with his support, and of course, the Commissioners as well. Great project, looking forward to it. At the same time, a lot of phone calls that I've received throughout the years about North University, I think a lot of those questions have already been answered. So we're looking at the project scheduled for '22?
Yes, sir. It's in our 2022 Street Maintenance Program, and it will be done in asphalt, so we kind of have to wait for the spring temperatures and the weather for when we can lay asphalt. So I would assume we'll start the project probably in April of 2022.
Now, is that, that's curb to curb?
It takes it from curb to curb. The asphalt, as you mentioned, is in much need of repair, and so this is a mill and relay of the entire asphalt down to the base, and then building the street back up. The curb and gutter and all the improvements behind the curb and gutter are already done.
Is there going to be a bike lane? I know there's been some discussion.
It's still being discussed right now, not with this project. This is just a street improvement project. The width of the street does allow for something like that to be done with striping.
The possibility is there eventually.
It is. It is there, yes, sir.
Okay. Let me see here. Jeez. This is great. Great news. Great news for North University.
Yeah, this is a great project, another collaboration with Lubbock County. And as I mentioned, they're going to participate 50% of the project, construction project, once we get those bids, up to a million dollars of county funds. So that's a real good project between the two of us.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. At, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chides, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Franklin, on the map.
Mm-hmm.
What is the building west of Jones Stadium? The red roof building? I'm not familiar with that building.
It's an old coliseum.
I just had to ask.
You had to ask. Actually, this was ironically, this map was chosen, it was the same presentation, same map, that I presented when we did the resolution last year, so aerial photo's a little older. That's all right. It gets to point.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin, please remind us and citizens that we have other projects that we're doing in conjunction with the county. I think it's a nice reminder. It's not something that we've always done a lot of, and we've got other things going on. Tell us about that.
Yeah, sure. We have, like you mentioned, we haven't always done projects with the county, but here lately we've done a few with the county. We did South University was one that we did in our street maintenance program, very similar to this. South of 1585, we've also had, they're doing a project right now on West 50th that they're participating in and doing within the city limits. And so here in the last several years, we've actually had several joint projects, which is a nice collaborative effort between the two of us.
And we were out on one today, I believe, in South Indiana, one also?
Yes. South Indiana's one. We're, that's the inside the loop, the city's paying for their portion, outside the loop, county's paying for their portion, but it was done together as one project that we're managing here, and to help benefit both the county and the city in getting good bids on a larger project.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Anything else for Wood? Ms. Joy?
Will redoing the street change that parking along North University where you're going down the street, and all of a sudden you've got angled parking and then different kinds of parking?
Well, there is, very similar with the bike question, bike lane question, there is an opportunity for restriping that we're going to look at. A lot of those, we've gone through that, looking at taking off the angled parking. A lot of those businesses really want that angled parking there. The pavement section here is very wide and does allow for it, but I think we can look at our striping when we finish the project and do that in a more safe manner and get that done and accomplished. But that is definitely something that we will look at when we do our design.
Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Franklin? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Council, we've got a motion and a second to approve Item 7.8. Is there further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. We'll now move to our regular agenda. That's Item 8 on the agenda. Item 8 begins with Item 8.1. It's on page 429. Items 8.1 and 8.2 are resolutions from the City Secretary's Office. We were briefed on both of these this afternoon. They're both, they're related to redistricting. I'm going to let Ms. Garza make a couple comments, and then we will consider these items. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. 8.1 is actually a resolution to adopt criteria that will provide the City a method to evaluate any proposed plans that will come before the City Council, and it will also help us to comply with any federal and state laws that are applicable. And then, Item 8.2 on page 433, that is a resolution adopting guidelines for any persons who have specific plans that they wish the Council to consider. This provides a way to have orderly consideration and evaluation of any plans that are going to come before the City Council, and again, this will assist in the City complying with any federal and state laws that are applicable. And if there are any questions, we do have our consultant, David Mendez, here as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Garza. Council, any questions for Ms. Garza? Mr., we probably should tape these separately, don't you think, Mr. Weaver? Yeah. Okay. Open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of Item 8.1. Thank you, Mr. Massengill, for the motion. Mr. Griffith, for the second. Okay, Council, is there discussion on 8.1? That's the resolution, as Ms. Garza indicated, that adopts the redistricting criteria that apply to the new plans. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve Item 8.1, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Joy, do you have a motion on Item 8.2?
Move to approve. Item 8.2, a resolution adopting redistricting guidelines regarding public participation in the redistricting process.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Council, is there discussion on Item 8.2? All right. All those in favor of Item 8.2, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Mendez. We appreciate you being here. We'll see you soon. All right. We'll move now to Item 8.3. These are board appointments. It's our practice, on a quarterly basis, to do appointments to our boards and commissions. Not that we don't do a few in the interim, but the bulk of them, we try to do on the first meeting of every quarter. We've set our boards and commissions so that the terms expire in an orderly form, so we do about a quarter of these every quarter. Tonight, we've got a number to go through, and if you guys would bear with us, we'll get started. We'll start with Building Board of Appeals. I call on Ms. Joy to make a motion.
Move to appoint Alex Cardenas to the Building Board of Appeals.
Okay. We've got a motion, and he's going to be in the...
He's a master plumber.
And he'll be in the plumber position.
Yes.
Okay? Motion from Ms. Joy, second from Mr. Massengill. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion to apply, excuse me, to appoint Mr. Cardenas to the Building Board of Appeals, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Joy, can you help with a motion for Citizens Traffic Commission?
I move to appoint Leslie Linderos to the Citizens Traffic Commission.
So motion from Ms. Joy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Got a motion to appoint Leslie Linderos to the Citizens Traffic Commission. Is there discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. We'll move now to Health and Educational Facilities Development Corporation Board of Directors. Ms. Patterson-Harris, can you help with a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Winter Chambers Horton to the Health Educational Facilities Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to appoint Winter Chambers Horton to the Health Educational Facilities Development Corporation Board of Directors. Council, is there discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have an appointment to the Lubbock Emergency Communication District Board of Directors?
I do. I move that we reappoint Robert Kinnast to the Lubbock Emergency Communications Board of Directors.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there any discussion on the motion to appoint, reappoint Rob Keenest to the LECD Board? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. We'll go to Mr. Chides next. Mr. Chides, do you have a motion regarding the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors?
Yes, I do, Mayor. I'd like to move for appointment of Regina Johnston, I'm sorry, Walter Cathy. My fault.
That's okay. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Cathy to the Lead Up Board of Directors. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is on that? That second's for Mr. Christian?
No. I'd like to also make an appointment, or reappointment...
Please do.
Of Chris Carpenter, Brett Cates, to the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors.
Mr. Christian, will you accept that, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've got one motion to reappoint Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Cates, and to appoint Mr. Cathy to the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors. Council, is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Let's skip down to the Market Lubbock Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Mr. Chides, can you make a motion there, please?
I certainly would, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Chris Carpenter, Brett Cates, and move for nomination of Walter Cathy.
Thank you. Thank you for the motion, Mr. Chides. A second, Ms. Joy. Council, is there discussion on the Market Lubbock reappointments and appointment? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Let's go to the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission. Mr. Chides, can you make a motion on this one, please?
Definitely, Mayor. I move to appoint Donna McAllister to the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Just as a note, Ms. McAllister, if nominated or if elected or approved, will serve as the representative of a water organization as required by one of the slotted positions on the Lubbock Water Advisory Corporation. Is there discussion on this motion? All those in favor of appointing Ms. McAllister to the Lubbock Water Advisory Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay. We'll go down to Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board. Mr. Christian, will you help us with this one, please?
Yes, sir. We have one reappointment and three appointments. The reappointment that I recommend is Alana Watts.
Okay. Okay. Got that. You want to keep going?
Yes, sir. That'd be fine. The appointments were Robbie Moon, Mark Bascom, and Robert Richard.
Okay. So you've got reappointment of Ms. Watts in an engineering position, the appointment of Mr. Moon representing West Texas Home Builders, Mr. Branscom representing as a licensed HVAC contractor, and Mr. Bichard as a facilities manager.
That's correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chides. Is there discussion on Mr. Christian's motion? All those in favor to appoint, or to approve the motion related to the Model Codes and Construction Advisory Board, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. We'll go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Move to reappoint Zach Sawyer, Susan Tomlinson, and Jordan Wheatley to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and to move to appoint Brandon Hardaway to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Got a motion for Mr. Griffith, the second from Ms. Joy. Is there discussion on this motion? Okay, Council, we've got a motion and a second to reappoint Mr. Sawyer, Ms. Tomlinson, and Mr. Wheatley, and to appoint Mr. Hardaway to the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Let's go finally to, we have two more, excuse me. Mr. Massengill, do you have a motion related to the Urban Design and Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I make a motion to appoint Deborah Bigness to the Urban Design Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Bigness, if appointed, would serve in the Sociology and Anthropologist slotted position. Council, is there discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Ms. Bigness to the Urban Design Historic Preservation Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that sign? That motion carries seven to zero. And finally, Mr. Massengill, will you help us with a nomination to the Water Board of Appeals?
Certainly, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to appoint Dennis Karazalis to the Water Board of Appeals.
Second.
Motion to appoint Mr. Karazalis for Mr. Massengill, seconded by Ms. Joy. Council, is there discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Karazalis to the Water Board of Appeals, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? All right. Motion carries seven to zero, and that takes care of Item 8.3. Council, thank you so much for your help. All right. Let's go to Item 8.4. Item 8.4 comes to us from Business Development. You'll recall that two meetings ago, we had a presentation regarding the Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, or PACE. Ms. Girardi came at that time, along with an expert from the Austin area that did a presentation. At that point, Council said, let's go forward and put this in place in Lubbock. We're going to see a brief presentation from Ms. Girardi before we consider this item. Council, this item begins on page 599. Mr. Atkinson, anything you'd like to say to set this up? We'll go straight to Ms. Girardi then. Breanna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, I'm glad to be back with you this evening to take the first step in the possible creation of the Lubbock PACE program. As the Mayor mentioned, we do have an expert, or did have an expert from the Texas PACE Authority with us two meetings ago. She is also here this evening. Ms. Charlene Hatinger is with us tonight, so I'm going to give you a very brief overview, kind of reminder of the things that we discussed at your last meeting, but if you do have any at your last meeting. But if you do have any detailed questions or want to get too far in the weeds, then I'll call her up for backup. As the mayor mentioned, we did present this to the council and the public during work session on September fourteenth. The action that you will be asked to consider today is a resolution of intent to create the PACE program. This is the first step in a series of steps to create this program in the city of Lubbock. And a little bit further in the presentation, I'll talk you through what our next steps will be, should you all decide to move forward with this item tonight. As a reminder, the problem that the PACE program attempts to solve are energy-efficient upgrades to buildings that are long overdue for renovation. This is specific to investments in water and energy savings, distributed generation products, energy efficiency, things like that. This is a private financing tool that does provide long-term, low-cost funding for those types of renovations on applicable buildings. To be eligible, this is only for commercial property, which does include nonprofits, multifamily projects of a minimum of five dwelling units or more, and then industrial buildings as well. This slide I borrowed from Ms. Haydinger's presentation from the fourteenth. This kind of breaks down who does what once we create the PACE program. One of the steps that we'll talk about here shortly, but you will be asked to take action on at a later date, is a professional services agreement with the Texas PACE Authority. We're very fortunate with a program like this, that we really, as a city, just make the program available, and then we contract at no cost with the Texas PACE Authority to oversee any project that pursues this type of incentive. So really, our role is just to establish the program and make the economic development incentive available to our development community. And then the business or nonprofit would work directly with the private financing industry, and then the Texas PACE Authority, both for application to determine qualification, and then also to set the assessment for the project. This slide just gives you a little bit more of a visual of how that process works. Again, the city really, once we decide to create the program, our role is really done, and the Texas PACE Authority and the private industry handles it from there. We've touched on this a little bit already, but just want to reiterate that the city does not invest any tax dollars into this incentive. It is an economic development tool, it is an economic development incentive, but it's provided directly by private financing institutions. So as I mentioned before, the item before you tonight is a resolution of intent to create this program. Should you decide to move forward with that resolution of intent, we will proceed with the following three items. I did list these on the slide as taking place at your next council meeting on October twenty-sixth. We don't have to do all three of these items on the twenty-sixth, if we want to spread this out. You all have the ability to do that, but they do have to go in the order that's listed here on the slide. So if we move forward with the resolution tonight, our next step would be to conduct a public hearing regarding the creation of the Lubbock PACE program. The only requirement by state statute for that public hearing is that we post a report that explains and outlines the program on the City of Lubbock website. We've gone ahead and posted that report, so it is available for the community to review. There's also a sample of the application that's included as part of that report, and you all have that in your backup today as well. Following that public hearing, we will do a resolution to actually create the program. And then, like I mentioned before, you all would consider the professional services agreement with the Texas PACE Authority to execute the program and be the point of contact for businesses and financing institutions going forward. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Girardi. Are there questions for Ms. Girardi on this item? I know we took a deep dive into this a couple, about a month ago, so Ms. Haydinger, thank you so much for being back tonight. Okay, thank you, Breanna. Counselors, there are a motion to begin consideration of item eight-three.
Move to a second.
Eight-four, excuse me. Second, it's on, motion to approve item eight-four by Mr. Griffith, and a second by Mr. Massengill. Is there a discussion on this item? Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item eight-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign. Okay, that motion carries six to zero, if you would. Mr. Christian had to step out for a moment. Thank you, thank you, Breanna. Okay, let's move to item eight-five. Counsel, eight-five begins the first of a number of zoning items. I thought it might be appropriate to have Mr. Isom do a brief overview of each one, and then we'll decide how we would like to handle these or consider these, okay? So, Mr. Isom, let's start with item seven, excuse me, eight, eight-five, and that is on page six fifty-two. And that's Zone Case twenty-six ninety-D. Does that sound right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Case twenty-six ninety-D is for A M D Engineering, representing K W T H E M LLC. This is a request to go from A-one and C-three to C-two with a specific use for a self-storage facility. This project is generally located east of Iola Avenue and north of Twenty-Sixth Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this project by vote of seven to one, with the listed conditions, and City Council approved the first reading by vote of four to two, with one abstention.
Any questions on eight-five? Okay, let's move on to eight-six. Begins on page six seventy, case twenty-nine oh four H.
Case twenty-nine oh four H is for Ingenium Civil Engineering, representing N of the South Plains. This has a request to go from IHC, C-four, and R-three to IHC. This project is generally located north of Marshes Sharp Freeway and west of Avenue Q. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Okay, any questions on item eight-six? Let's go to item eight-seven, so on page six ninety-one, case twenty-nine oh four I.
Case twenty-nine oh four I is for Style Real Estate Holdings LLC, representing ISOM E thirty-four LLC. The request is to rezone from C-three and IHC to IHC with a specific use for a blood bank, blood bank and blood plasma center, generally located east of Slide Road and north of Thirty-Fourth Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case unanimously, and the City Council approved first reading by unanimous vote as well.
Counsel, any questions on eight-seven? Okay, let's move to eight-eight. Begins on page seven eighteen, case thirty-one thirty-five B.
Case thirty-one thirty-five B is for Westar Commercial Realty, representing Top Hat Operators LLC. The request is to rezone property from C-three and C-four, or C-three to C-four with a specific use for a bar. This project is generally located west of Indiana Avenue and south of one hundred and eighteenth Street. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council approved first reading also by unanimous vote.
Any questions on item eight-eight, counsel? Okay, we'll go to item eight-nine. Begins on page seven thirty-four, case thirty-two fifty-seven M.
Case thirty-two fifty-seven M is a case for, is a request by Hugo Reed and Associates for Fifteen eighty-five Development LLC and Rocket Partners LLC. The request is to rezone property from R-one specific use for reduced setbacks to R-one specific use for townhomes. This project is generally located south of one hundred and thirty-seventh Street and west of Elgin Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and City Council approved first reading also by a unanimous vote.
Counsel, any questions on eight-nine? Let's go to item eight-ten. Begins on page seven fifty, case thirty-three oh eight D.
Case thirty-three oh, thirty-three oh eight D is a request by A M D Engineering for the listed property owners in the agenda. The request is to rezone from R-one to R-one A. Project is generally located east of Upland Avenue and north, on both the north and south sides of Twenty-third Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council also approved first reading by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any questions on eight-ten, counsel? Let's move to item eight-eleven. Begins on page seven sixty-seven, Zone Case thirty-four forty-three.
Case thirty-four forty-three is a request by Dr. Middle and Greg Garrett, representing J K L M Investments. The request is to go from C-two A to C-two zoning. The project is generally located east of Indiana and south of one hundred and third Street. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council approved first reading also by a unanimous vote.
Okay, any questions on eight-eleven, counsel? Okay, let's move to eight-twelve. Eight-twelve begins on page seven eighty, case thirty-four forty-four.
Case thirty-four forty-four is a request by A M D LLC, A M D Engineering LLC for Escondido Lubbock LLC. The request is to rezone property from T to R-two. The project is generally located west of Upland Avenue and on the south side of Fifty-Eighth Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote, and the City Council approved first reading also by a unanimous vote.
Any questions on item eight-twelve? Okay, let's move to item eight-thirteen. Begins on page seven ninety-eight, case thirty-four forty-five.
Case thirty-four forty-five is a request by Hugo Reed and Associates LLC, representing Lubbock Economic Development Alliance. The request is to rezone property from T to M-two. The project is generally located east of Loop Two eighty-nine and south of Fourth Street. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by unanimous vote. City Council approved first reading also by a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on eight-thirteen? Let's move to item eight-fourteen. Begins on page eight twenty-seven, case thirty-four forty-seven.
Case thirty-four forty-seven is for A M D Engineering LLC, representing N W P E B Five Project LLC. The request is to rezone from R-one to C-three specific use for a self-storage facility. The request is generally located east of Frankfurt Avenue and south of Princeton Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by vote of seven to zero with one abstention. The City Council approved this request by unanimous vote.
Counsel, any questions on eight-fourteen? Okay, let's go to eight-fifteen. Begins on page eight forty-four, case thirty-four forty-six.
Case thirty-four forty-six is another request by A M D Engineering LLC, representing N W P E B Five Project LLC. The request is to rezone property from R-one to R-two and A-two. The project is generally located south of Ursulon Street and east of Frankfurt Avenue. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request by vote of seven to zero with one abstention. The City Council approved this request, or the first reading of this request by unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, questions on item eight-fifteen? Okay, Mr. Isom, let's pause there for a minute. So, counsel, we have, where do we have, eleven of these, eleven second reads. How, how do we, how do you want to handle this? Let me ask this way. Which, which of these would you like to handle individually, Ms. Joy?
I have a question on eight-eight.
Okay, start with that.
And a question on eight-fourteen.
You want to just do those questions now?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, that works.
Mr. Isom, for the, for Mr. Isom, or for the proponents?
The, the first one, eight-eight, I think Mr. Isom may be able to answer the question. Mr. Isom, this is the, it's a bar. And it is, what I need to know is how, how far is it from that bar to the Cooper School? I'm looking at, I've looked at the map. It's kind of an, it's an unusual development in that there's a long row of apartments, and then there's this bar, but I mean, immediately, you are on the school property. So I was just concerned about the proximity to the, to the school.
I don't know the distance, but if they do require a variance from our alcohol ordinances, that would come back to you all.
Later.
And we would also notice Lubbock Cooper I C.
Okay, all right, good. And then on eight-fourteen, I guess this would be for the proponent, why they, why we didn't do a C-two specific use instead of a C-three.
Corey, you want to come up on that one, please?
Corey Dooley, A M D Engineering, sixty-five fifteen, Sixty-Eighth Street. We were prepared to make that change. The C-three is what the client requested, when we told him that there was some pushback and that the city may request it to go down to C-two. We were prepared to do that, but nobody asked us to do that at P and Z.
Will you do that now?
We'd be more than willing to do that. That's not a problem at all.
All right, okay. Thank you for that.
Ms. Joy, any other questions?
No, that's it.
Counsel, other questions on any of these items? Okay, so I think, it sounds like we need to handle, we need to consider eight-fourteen separately.
Yeah.
Okay. What others do we, any, what others do we like to consider separately?
Eight-five.
Eight-five? Okay, got eight-five and eight-fourteen separately. Any others? Okay, so, counsel, if it's, if it's, if it's okay with you, we'll first take care of the bulk of these. That would be items eight-six, eight-seven, eight-eight, eight-nine, eight-ten, eight-eleven, eight-twelve, eight-thirteen, and eight-fifteen. Is there a motion to begin considering those items?
I would make that motion approved, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, for that second. Counsel, we've got, once again, it's a motion for eight-six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fifteen. A motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments on this motion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, that's the motion to approve on second read, items eight-six, eight-seven, eight-eight, eight-nine, eight-ten, eight-eleven, eight-twelve, eight-thirteen, and eight-fifteen. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that sign? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay, let's go to eight-five. Let's get a motion, it's on page six fifty-two, Zone Case twenty-six ninety-D. Let's get a motion to begin consideration.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for the motion. Can I take, as a second, Mr. Christian? Okay, got a second for Mr. Christian. Ms. Joy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Counselors, there are further discussion on, or is there discussion on item eight-five? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I'm just trying to refresh my memory. I've slept at least once since the last council meeting. And I believe this is the item that is directly behind west.
Behind Best Buy.
Best Buy, Best Buy, that area.
Exactly, west of Best Buy.
Exactly. I just wanted to refresh my, my recollection. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Other comments, Ms. Joy?
Well, this is the item that we had many people oppose because of, it's a storage facility, but it's a little bit of different storage facility. Are any of the, the neighbors here tonight, and I guess I would ask Mr. Dooley, if he's had any more conversations with them. I've not heard anything either from them.
Counsel, would you?
Yes, sir.
Just give you a quick update on that.
Okay. Start your name and your address.
Good evening. Gary Andrews, Greco Real Estate. Since the, after the first reading, we did have a discussion with the neighbors. We gave them contact information, and we have not heard any additional concerns raised since it was approved at the last hearing, reading. We did confirm, and I believe, Councilwoman Patterson, I can't remember if it was your Councilwoman Joy that had the questions about stop signs on Twenty-Sixth. There are stop signs on Twenty-Sixth. I think that was one of the concerns. There was a question about the design standards of the streets. We have confirmed that the street design is correct. There is not a center stripe on the street. And I think we confirmed that that's relatively common with, with our, our half-mile streets, but in this instance, you're correct on the, on the stripe not being there. And, and we also confirmed that there's a stop sign at the apex of where Iola and Twenty-Ninth Street turn. I believe those were the only questions that were asked of us. And since the meeting, we haven't had any further concerns raised from the neighborhood or the Neighborhood Association, but we gave them both our contact information. Have any answering questions?
You know this, part of the problem with that street is that it's accessible from Thirty-Fourth Street, and people have started using it as a shortcut to avoid the traffic at the west end. And it doesn't go straight, it curves around. It's not in very good condition. And there are two And there are two outlets from the west end onto that street. So, uh, safety's always number one, and I think the neighbors, I think safety was what they talked about. And it's something that our traffic people are going to have to look at. I don't know right now, um, with no striping, people just, they just go down and they go pretty fast, even with stop signs, they still go pretty fast, and it goes all the way to Nineteenth Street.
I do think the two questions that were brought up in the first meeting, from a standpoint of the traffic concerns there were, and, and I think we addressed this, but just as a refresher, the current zoning would allow for apartment units, which by, by the traffic engineering standards are about three hundred and twenty-five trips per day, you know? In apples-to-apples comparison, these storage units are about thirty-five to forty per day. So I think we addressed the traffic issue. I think the, the stop signs were part of it, somewhat of a catch-22, I think the fact that Iola is designed with that curvature back there to the, to the south of the intersection where that's in discussion, helps with the speed, right? And having a, and having a stop sign there at the Twenty-ninth and Iola intersection, as well as the Twenty-sixth and Iola intersection, I think helps with that. It is a, it is a, I mean, there's a higher traffic there than there has been previously. I think the concern, we say the condition of the street, obviously everything from Twenty-fourth now to Thirty-fourth is within five years of development or six years of development now. So I think the conditions there are, are just as good as anywhere in town. I think there's some further to the north of that, um, but I think our traffic, I think from a design standpoint, from a traffic standpoint, this is about the best use you can ask for, and from a design standpoint of the stretch we're talking about, I think it's as safe as it can be made with two stopping points and intersections.
Well, and I, I'm going to ask our engineers to take a look at that street and see what we can do. There's some development along that street, which is really attractive, um, and, uh, but right now, they haven't built a building yet. But I'm sure that is to come, uh, soon, sooner than later. But I do want us to, to look at the street and see what we can do to, to make that a little bit safer. I don't know, I don't know that, that the residents are going to be happy with what you're building, but maybe when you get it built, maybe they'll feel a little bit differently about it. But I don't think we, I don't know what else we can put there other than apartments, and it's zoned for that now. You could do that without even talking to us. So, that's kind of where I am. I don't know about Ms. Patterson-Harris, where she is on.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Yeah. My deal is, it doesn't change my mind, the fact that the citizens didn't contact you or that they're not here, I, I believe that they made themselves crystal clear when they were here at their last council meeting, and I, I really get concerned when we have citizens in that fashion to, to voice their concern, so, um, I'm gonna hang with them. I'm gonna hang with them and ride this out with them because they were clear, and I understand exactly what they're stating. I believe that the fact that it is at present is zoned, to put those apartments there is done so for a reason. So, uh, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Anything else for Mister Andrews? All right, thank, thank you very much, Gary. Okay, I think, uh, Mister Weaver, do we have a motion, a second on this one? We do, don't we? Okay. Councils, is there further discussion on item eight-five? Okay, we have a motion to approve on second reading, uh, zone case twenty-six ninety-D, our item eight-five tonight. Any, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by the same side?
Aye.
The motion, uh, carries five to two. All right, let's move to item eight-fourteen, so on page eight twenty-seven, zone case thirty-four forty-seven. Ms. Joy will open the floor for a motion.
Uh, move to approve a request of AMD Engineering LLC for N W P E B dash five Project LLC for a zone change from single-family District R-one to two-family, I'm on the wrong line, sorry about that, let me back up. Uh, for a zone change from single-family District R-one to general retail District C-two with a specific use for a self-storage facility, generally located east of Frankfurt Avenue and south of Princeton Street, on four point two-one acres of unpleaded land out of block J S, section six.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second, uh, to, um, amend.
To amend.
To amend, right? Is that what, Ms. Joy, is that your motion would be to amend, right?
Yes, to amend, yes.
We have to, but consider this, and we consider the original motion as amended, correct? Okay, so, it's appropriate to have discussion on this amendment. Council, is there any discussion on Ms. Joy's mo- motion to change the zoning type? From C-three to C-two specific use, correct?
For a self-storage facility, yes, and that's, uh, by agreement, uh, of the proponent. Uh, there's no necessity for a C-three in order to have that, um, self-storage unit, a C-two does the same, will do the same thing with a specific use, so, I appreciate, uh, you all taking that into consideration.
Any questions or comments, uh, on, on this one? On the, on the, the motion to amend? Okay, council, we've got a, a motion on the floor to amend, um, item eight-fourteen. All those in favor of that amendment, motion to amend, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. Now, let's get a motion, uh, to consider the, uh, ori- original motion as amended. Ms. Joy, can you get that?
To approve, um, zone case three, four, four, seven, as amended, uh, to reflect the change to C-two, uh, with a specific use for a storage facility.
Second. Motion by Ms. Joy, second by Mister Griffith. Is there discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of approving item eight-fourteen, um, as amended, um, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed by that same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, we will now go to item eight-sixteen. This, once again, is a second read, um, from planning. This updates or amends chapter forty of our Code of Ordinances, and I'd like, uh, Mister Eisen to do a quick overview on this, please.
Sure, so, this is the second portion of amendments to chapter forty. We began this process a few months ago. Um, we had listened to council, some of our prior public hearings, and worked with our UDC Subcommittee to try to identify a few land uses that need some adjustments made. Um, one of the first ones that you'll see here is office warehouse. We've had a number of folks come in for an office warehouse use, however, to get that outside storage component of it, they would have to go to M-one. This will allow them to, to, um, get that land use in C-four, but it would have some requirements as far as their outside storage, um, most notably that they couldn't do any outside storage if they were adjacent to any of our single-family or two-family districts. They'd also have to screen any of their materials, and, uh, there would be a limit on how large their storage facility could be based on the size of their office space, or actually based on the size of their building, I apologize. Um, the second one was a, kind of a rewrite to help us work on the second portion of this, so sixteen thirty-two B would allow for outside storage, um, and other accessory uses in certain items listed below, uh, which listed below were two, uh, land uses we worked on for hardware stores and home improvement centers. Uh, the latter would allow, um, outside storage to be, they both would allow outside storage, um, as long as there was screening from a six-foot masonry wall, but the second version, the home improvement center, would allow the outside storage as long as it's screened, but also allows for additional buildings to be used to warehouse materials. Sorry, with that, I will take any questions.
Okay, any questions, uh, for Mister, for Mister Eisen? Okay, thank you, Brian. Is there a motion, council, to begin consideration of item eight-sixteen?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mister Masagil, thank you, Ms. Joy. Council, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we've got, uh, um, a, a motion and a second to approve on second read, um, item eight-sixteen, which amends our chapter forty, as described by Mister Eisen. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Let's go to item eight-seventeen. It is on page, begins on page eight sixty-nine. It's a alcohol, uh, variant, separation variance, uh, and, uh, let's get a little information on this, uh, from Mister Eisen before we, we begin consideration.
So this item is for city council to consider resolution approving and granting a variance from the applicable three-hundred-foot minimum distance provisions of the City of Lubbock ordinance, number two thousand nine oh zero zero six zero, at thirty-three fourteen Fourth Street, for an alcoholic beverage permit for Everest Mart. Um, this facility is located within three hundred feet of a public school, which is Texas Tech University, to the west and the south. Uh, we have reached out to Texas Tech University, but with a written request, or notified them in writing of this request, but have not received anything back. Um, this location previously had a variance approved for a wine and beer retailer's off-premise permit in two thousand and nine, and they're coming back to add some additional permits. So this request now would include package store, beer retailer's off-premise permit, wine-only package store permit, and a wine and beer off-premise permit. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mister Eisen. Questions, council, for, for Mister Eisen on, on eight-seventeen? So do I understand that, Mister Eisen, is that, uh, just, uh, they, they could sell beer and wine previously, now they, it's, we'd be more, what we would consider, consider a liquor store, is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just a change in the liquor license, what it looked like from the backup? Okay, council, any discussion on this? All right, um, all those in favor of, do we have, we don't, we need a motion? We do. I don't think we have a motion. No, we don't. Okay, let's get a motion on this one. Mister Chides, can you get, can I get a motion for you? Thank you, Mister Chides, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mister Griffith. Okay, do we have further discussion? Okay, all those in, uh, all those in favor of approving item, the motion, of the motion to approve item eight-seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Okay, that motion carries seven to zero. All right, I think our final item tonight is item eight-eighteen. It begins on page eight eighty-two, um, and I'll, um, let, uh, Ms. Girardi do a quick, overview on this for us. Brianna?
Thank you, mayor, council. I do not have a presentation on this one for you tonight, I'll just give you a quick reminder of how we got to this point. We are, um, we've just completed the creation process for the Northwest Passage PID. What we're doing tonight kicks off the process to set their first assessment rate. So what you have before you tonight is a resolution approving the method of assessment classification for the new Northwest Passage PID, and then also calls a public hearing for October twenty-sixth, um, and then you will consider your first read of the ordinance to set the assessment at that time. Um, just as a reminder to the public, this PID is located, um, at North Quaker Avenue, just north of our existing North Point Public Improvement District. Um, we did hear the first public hearing, and, um, you all adopted the creation resolution on September fourteenth, and then again, we'll have our public hearing setting the assessment rate on October the twenty-sixth. The proposed assessment rate, just for your information, is fifteen cents per hundred-dollar valuation, which is pretty standard for our public improvement districts, um, throughout the city.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Girardi. Council, questions for Ms. Girardi? Okay, thank you, Brianna. Is there a motion to begin consideration? Ms. Joy? Thank you, Ms. Joy, is there a second? Thank you, Mister Christian. Discussion?
Mister Mayor, um, drainage issues that, um, exist. This is a very large, uh, piece of property, the Northwest Passage, um, and because it incorporates several different tracks, where it has to take care of drainage as it goes down towards North Quaker, and so that assessment will be for that purpose. At the time that it develops, then there will be a board appointed, uh, because it is a PID still, Public Improvement District, there'll be a board appointed, and then they'll, they will have the ability to, to vote as to what they would like to do and what the assessment may be. We still have to approve it, but that's kind of where this is right now, but it really is, uh, initially, uh, to assist with the drainage issue.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any, uh, further comments on this one, or, or questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, um, item eight-eighteen. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same side? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Ms. Garza, does that take care of things from your perspective tonight?
Yes, sir, it does.
Move to adjourn.
Let's get, let's make sure we get Mister Weaver, I, I want to get out here with that legal guy, say we're okay. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, I don't think there's any opposition to that, it's six thirty-seven, it's a great day in Lubbock, Texas, as Lubbock City Council is adjourned.